Meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is 7:01 PM. Now, even before I read the hybrid meeting notice, I just want to acknowledge that a dear friend of the Grafton community, Jim Gallagher, has passed away today. I learned that. So he's, Jim Gallagher passed away today. So I'm going to take this moment of the meeting, just to have a brief moment of silence before we continue with the meeting. All right, thank you. So moving along from that unfortunate news. Just to start off with, since this is a hybrid meeting pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is being conducted with both in-person and remote participation by board members and members of the public. Remote participation by the public for the public comment agenda item, the public hearings, and any other matter for which the board allows public participation will be via the Zoom raise hand feature. If you raise your hand on Zoom, you will be enabled at an appropriate point to enter the meeting via voice or make a video or video to make a comment or ask a question. In all cases, whether in person or remote, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. Every vote tonight will be taken by roll call. Please note that this meeting is being recorded as well as being broadcast live on the Grafton Community Television Government Channel. I'll start with a roll call of the board. Mr. Robbins?
Present.
Mr. Hassinger?
I'm here. There's somebody.
Feedback.
Somebody. Yeah, you got.
Michael, I believe it's Michael Bruce. If you could just mute, please.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Hassinger.
Present.
We do have Mr. Van Catraman, who told us he would be absent this evening. And associate member, Morimer Cormack, does not seem to be on the call yet. And of course, I am here. And we do have staff present. We have Fiona Coughlin, our town planner. And Eve Tapper.
I'm here as well.
And Talia Alward is also on the call. All right, that brings us to our first agenda item, which is public input. If anyone has anything to bring to the board's attention that is not otherwise on the agenda, now would be an appropriate time, either raising your hand on Zoom or in the room.
I have something to discuss that's on the agenda. Do you want me to wait till then or?
Please. Seeing nobody for, so they're not on the agenda, the first action item is an approval not required, 2023-02 for 128 Ferry Street. And in case it is better for the board to discuss, we have a second action item for 130 Ferry Street, also by the same owners and applicant.
I looked at those plans here on my computer screen. And I, I couldn't tell which lots the the filings were for exactly. I've asked that our A and R plans make clear was like a heavier line or something. The lot that's being approved or considered.
Yeah, I noticed that as well. Fiona, do you have any clarification or comment for us?
Sure. So one, the A and R for 130 Ferry Street is combining 130 Ferry Street and 130 Ferry Street here. And they did, I did ask the applicants to draw that initial dividing line. But they didn't get a chance to do that. And then in terms of 128 Ferry Street, they're really just trying to to divide, showcase the site as it exists currently and makes, and just ensures that that is on the record. It's really not making it any changes. It's, we did have, we did double check, check with council about this, and I have yet to hear back. But in terms of the application as proposed and demonstrating the existing parcel lines, we did not see anything that would be, you know, that you couldn't proceed with. And Michael, I don't know if you have a comment to this that you would like to follow up with.
Yeah, what's on the screen now is 128 Ferry Street. So if you could address that.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Michael Bruce, professional engineer. There actually are two applications. There's two separate landowners here. That's not the same landowner. I'm the engineer for both landowners, same surveyor, but same engineer, but different landowners. So 128 is on the screen. The cursor is circling 128. The purpose of this A and R submission is to define, there's never been a plan done for 128 Ferry Street. It's, we, this is the first plan we know of. We want to get it recorded. So it's defined and we can prepare for future engineering and development.
Yep. I, looking at this, what I noticed that there's a notation, which is hard to read on the screen here, but it was too, for the, the purpose of A and R is to get accurate property boundaries. Comparing this plan to the deed that is referenced, you will see that the bearing and distance, meets and bounds, as it were, on the, on the deed are different from that shown on the plan. And I'm assuming that the plan is, is a survey that's intended to more accurately represent the property boundaries.
Oh, yes, yes. Mr. Rob Knappick's a surveyor. He, he went out, did all the field work necessary to come up with this plan.
Yeah. So that's really, it's just, this is for the purpose of getting an accurate documentation of the property boundaries.
Okay, I'm not going to be able to vote in favor of this because of the problems with the plan and not having it be clear. Often these plans have a note that says what they're trying to do. And which lot, you know, a clear identification of what lot, what lot lines and so on. It's just not good enough for me.
There's, there is text sort of where the cursor is now that lists the landowner deed reference, the assessor's map number, the area of the parcel, how much frontage it has on Ferry Street, which zoning district it is, and why we're seeking A and R endorsement of this plan next to the locust map.
And why can't you highlight the lot like I've asked before that you're working on? All right. Be enough, be enough phones.
All right. I, any further comments, questions, or if not, a motion?
Move the board find that approval is not required and authorize the planner to sign on behalf of the board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I guess I'll second my chair, but so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Present.
Ms. Hassinger?
Well, I don't want to because I think it is important for them. I mean, I'm not going to the register of deeds and looking things up. That's not in my responsibility. It's in the responsibility of people coming before the board to do the very best job of presenting what it is that they're trying to do as clearly and as succinctly as possible. And I do resent the fact what he says, you know, what was in the deed, it's at the registry of deeds. Well, swell. I don't go to the registry of deeds every day. And I would love to have seen it marked with a clear, solid line. That can't take that long when you're drawing out these plans. But I don't have any major objections, so I'm going to say aye. But I really think that's something that we need to demand from the planning office.
Thank you. And I will vote aye. I declare the most encouraged by the required three members.
And let me bring up the 130 Ferry Street plan here. See if my computer will show that. Yeah. Now here, we refer back, this is the official A and R plan to be recorded. And here they, they provided an additional sketch to show that a lot line is being removed.
Yes. This one is, was a lot clearer.
So this is 130 Ferry Street and 130 Ferry Street rear. And this will be the resulting combined lot.
Any?
What, does that second drawing get recorded with this?
No, sir. Our intention was to record just the larger 24 by 36 drawing. This was prepared as an exhibit just to support the application. We didn't want to show the lot line that's going to be removed on the plan that's going to be recorded. Appreciate your, your comments on the drafting and, and Ms. Hassinger's comments on the drafting. I'll definitely bring that back to Mr. Knappick, let him know how the board prefers to see these, whether it's a thicker line or larger meets and bounds descriptions or whatever it is to clearly call out which lot is being worked on here in relation to the other lots. But no, we didn't want to show, he didn't want to show the lot line that's going to be extinguished on this plan. We thought it'd be clear for people looking at this plan in the future. If, why show a lot line? No, it's not there anymore.
Could we look at that second drawing again for just a second? Okay, the lines aren't darker, but at least the type is. But still, okay, gonna come out the same way this time.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the board find that approval is not required for this plan and that the board authorized the planner to sign on behalf of the board.
And I have a second this time. All right. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Present.
Ms. Hassinger?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare motion carried by the required three members. All right, that brings us to our next action item, which is
Thank you all.
Thank you. A draft decision for the modification of definitive plan DP 2016-01.4 for the Village Institute Road, Woodland Hill from Pulte Homes, New England. I think my biggest comment on this is relevant to both our draft decisions tonight, but that I believe this is the first that Fiona has drafted for us as a board. But I do know that the board's typical preference is to have any favorable or not favorable choices in the draft to be explicitly like highlighted or yes, no kind of thing. So we don't have a presumption of our decision before the vote when we do the draft.
Yeah, we got dinged about that 10 or 20 years ago.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question on that? Because I, I, I know that when you do a draft decision, that's generally the way, and I, maybe I'm wrong. I thought at the last meeting you voted to approve it and she was just writing the decision based on what you had already voted on, but maybe I misunderstood.
We don't do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, we closed the public hearing, direct staff to draft a decision. But until we have the draft decision before, so we don't actually vote up or down on the findings and the waivers and the conditions.
Yeah, and generally
Okay, I, I thought that you did. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Generally, staff has a pretty good understanding of what direction the board is leaning in based on discussions at our hearings, but we, we want to, you know, remove the ambiguity that there's a presumption of we already made a choice before we come to discuss the decision.
Yeah, that's just, you're just sort of, that's our, that's been our practice.
Yep.
And there are even times when we've had online live editing during the meeting so that we'd have a document that, you know, whatever comes up.
Yeah, so, yeah, is an example of what's on the screen now. We don't yet know who is going to make, make in second the motion to approve this.
Right.
And it might turn out the way it's written.
Yeah, but also I have, do we have the yes, no options in there?
Not in this draft, no.
Yeah, because that's all, that's the thing that we were before most of us, most of you were here, came up in something or other. It looked like, you know, it was decided. It's not decided until we vote.
Okay.
So you can look at an old decision and we'll see that.
So all you voted on that the last time was to close the public hearing and to direct the planner to draft it with the idea that you were leaning in favor or you want, you always want the two pieces, even if you are in favor. Even if you've already said you're, you're, you're leaning in favor, you still want the two choices. Is that correct?
The, the vote and decisions we usually make before we close the hearing is without any presumption of which way we're leaning. But the, the, the knowledge of staff on, you know, their impression of which way we're leaning can help, you know, how to word certain, you know, decisions or waivers, you know.
Right, right. I guess I misunderstood what you voted on. I mean, I didn't write it, but Fiona ran it by me as well. I, I misunderstood what, that what you had actually voted on at the last time. So that's good to know.
Yep. Well, this, this is probably what one can expect to happen is new staff getting used to the way we traditionally do things.
Yep.
Because different boards are going to do things different ways. But yes, just to sort of reiterate, our practice has always been to close the public hearing without making any decisions about findings or waivers or conditions. We may discuss findings and waivers and discussions, but we don't formally vote on those until we have a draft decision in front of us.
Usually our staff has a pretty good idea
Yeah.
of where it's going.
In, in some cases, how you write the parts of the decision depends on whether it's going to be an approval or a denial.
Okay, got it.
It, it doesn't often happen that way, but it does happen.
So besides the concerns on just making sure we have the right dates and right person that made the motion and seconded and the final, you know, correct tally on votes, does anyone on the board have any comments or concerns with this draft?
I, no, I had nothing.
I don't hear any. Do I have a motion on this?
I would move that the board find favorably and approve the application of a modi, for modification of definitive plan approval with the conditions as drafted.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to find favorably and approve the modification as drafted. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins?
We, we don't need to mention in the motion to adjust at least who made, you know, where, where we guessed who was going to make the motion.
Yes, I would assume that the decision will reflect the votes that are taken tonight.
Yes.
And if staff, I would say, as my own thing, that just thought of it, if it's worth calling out in the draft, you know, in the final decision that Prabhu was absent tonight for the vote, that's something that I'd consider within the scope of what we're
Yeah, that'll make it, there'll be a change there on record of vote.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. So calling the vote. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously for in favor, one absent. That brings us to the next action item, which is a draft decision for site plan approval, SPA 2022-01 for 25 Snow Road. And we have the same comments from the last one about just who made the motion and that, that aspect, but
Right, so, yeah, so assuming that the draft decision will be updated to reflect the motions made at this meeting this evening. I didn't see anything else in the draft decision that I thought needed to be changed or updated.
I don't recall seeing anything myself. And I'm not hearing anyone else speak up. So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion then. Well, move that the board make the findings as written in the, in the draft decision, that the board grant the requested waivers as represented in the draft decision and that the board approve the site plan with the conditions as drafted.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have the motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously for in favor and one absent. And that brings us to our next action item, which is the master plan kickoff. I'm going to guess we need more than seven minutes for that. Mr. Board, do you want to start that and stop it? Do we want to do something else?
Why don't you do bills and minutes?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Do I have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve our bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare motion carried unanimously, one absent. And
Move we approve the minutes of previous meeting. Do we, do we have any minutes?
I don't see any.
It's not on our meeting materials. Did I get it in email?
I see we have staff report with a memo that doesn't really take much time to Brigati Village update. It's just a memo.
Yeah, Fiona, maybe talk to the Brigati Village update, at least regarding staff report so far and
Yep, absolutely. So just, just a quick summary. I'm sorry, did someone trying to speak? Oh, sorry. Okay. Um, so it's just a, just a quick summary, just part of the meeting materials. We were in receipt of a memorandum that set forth the fire department's minimum requirements for new developments. With respect to those requirements, it was our understanding that the fire department had expressed concerns regarding the current development proposal known as Brigati Village. The fire chief, Chief Matthew, had forwarded those concerns to the planning department office. So the planning board has them on file and we will maintain those in the record. The subsequent memo that I'm reading off tonight was received and added to the project file on February 14th, 2023. So it's really serving as just a project update for the board following that, that process with Brigati Village and that we've been in communication with the chief and we've received correspondence from the chief that will be added to the file regarding the length and public safety concerns of Brigati Village as it's proposed.
And that's been put astray to our council.
Correct.
Anything the board wanted to discuss about the entries in our correspondence tonight?
Just one, one note of, one of the items that's in the correspondence has to do with, what is it, 124 West Borough Road?
Yes.
Yeah, 124 West Borough Road. There's really nothing, no action required, but it's sort of interesting to note. This is the mass development parcel West Borough and Institute Road. What we have here is just a notice that an environmental notification form is going to be filed for this. There is actually no, no real information available other than the fact that, you know, there's, there's an ENF coming on this and presumably this project will sooner or later come to the board's attention in other ways. But just, it's, it's simply, we're, we're, you know, makes us aware that something's happening at this parcel.
Fiona? A little ways back, someone asked me, they said they saw surveyors and all sorts of activity out there and wondered what was going on. Eventually, I think I was able to discover this among them.
Go ahead, Fiona.
I just wanted to provide some follow-up that the applicants are planning to file their ENF with the state tomorrow, February 28th. They are going to be having a community workshop for all of those who are interested in participating on March 16th at 6:00 PM, I believe. So there'll be more. And that, that sheet that's part of the correspondence has a QR code there that will take you to a website that provides project updates and a little bit more background about the proposal for the site, which is as stated, a 200,000 square foot light industrial slash research and development complex. If anyone has any questions or wants more information about 124 West Borough Road, please feel free to reach out to me. But at this time, the planning department hasn't been as, as involved other than helping them organize logistics for the community workshop as there's nothing that will, has been submitted in front of our office just yet. We're just helping, we're helping them in those preliminary stages until they're ready to, to, for town filings essentially.
Do you know what time that workshop will be?
6 o'clock.
So I've got a CMRPC transportation committee meeting to chair at that particular time.
Okay.
We'll hear about it.
Few seconds till 7:30, so I'm going to play a Jeopardy music in my head.
Let's see, what do we? Okay.
Yeah, just one, it'll be tentatively, I forgot to mention, I apologize, that the community workshop is reserved from March 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and it's going to be held at Apple Tree Arts.
All right, thank you.
So it won't be on Zoom or anything?
No, it's going to be in person.
Yeah.
All right. That brings us to 7:30, which will do our public hearings, starting with the request for special permit and site plan approval for 1822 Donahue Lane. I will, just prior to Mr. Robbins reading the legal notice, note that the applicant has requested a continuance because they need to re-advertise with a modified notice to, but I still will read a notice again during the next hearing day, but we'll still re-listen to it tonight. So that was advertised.
All right. So pursuant to sections 1.5.7 and 1.3.3 of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 27th, 2023, commencing at 7:30 PM to consider the application for a to consider the application for a special permit and site plan approval for a contractor's yard, including new twelve thousand square foot building to be located at eighteen and twenty-two Donahue Lane, shown as graphed in Assessor's Map twenty-six lots one and two A. Said property is located in an office light industrial O L I zoning district. The applicant slash owner is eighteen and twenty-two Donahue Lane LLC. A copy of the application slash plan is available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at W W W dot Grafton dash M A dot gov on the planning department slash development projects webpage.
Alright, and as I mentioned, we do have a formal request to have a continuance on this project. They, the applicant does need to re-advertise with some amended language. So the date for this hearing to be brought back up will be March twenty-seventh, if the board approves the continuous request?
I'll move this, board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing to Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty P M.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassenger.
Aye.
And I vote aye, I declare the motion carried unanimously for in favor, one absent. And for any members of the public that was here for this, the Donahue Lane, we will bring this back up on March twenty-seventh, since the applicant needs to re-advertise properly. We're not taking testimony right now, but if you have a question, I'll be happy to, if it's a the, we can't really take testimony for continuing it because the applicant's not here to actually hear you as well, so if it's, you know, concerned, we do have all the material on the website, as well as if you have questions, in particularly, you can always contact the staff, we can answer it, but you know, as a board, we really shouldn't be having that discussion.
You won't receive another written notice, uh you have, you have heard the, actually, you probably will receive an abutters notice because of the fact that it's being re-advertised.
Yes, we will be sending out the notices as they are for the labels received from the assessor's office. And we will be re-advertising in the paper.
So everything will go out as though it were the, as though the next hearing was the first hearing. So yes, everybody who should be notified will be notified.
Yeah, it sounds like there might be a a, a lack of understanding about whether someone is in the circle that gets notified.
Yeah, I think the, if you're concerned about not being notified, anything may have been, it information on who should be notified is in the application package on our website, as well as staff can certainly touch base with you as well, but we'll be bringing it back up March twenty-seventh at seven thirty P M. You're welcome. Alright, and that, do we have a stenographer here?
We, we should say, um ma- notifications are both mailings to individual people and it's advertised in the local paper for everybody. That's to cover that. That base.
Our next agenda item will be for the regressive special permit and site plan approval for fifty-eight Fallat Street. If the stenographer, yep. Is there anything we can kick out in ten minutes that I've left?
Unless
you might do some of our uh uh zoning changes.
Right, some of the zoning changes, we had uh you know, there are some, some zoning changes that will require some discussion, but uh there were, I think three that I think we had kind of agreed on at the last meeting.
Yeah, we can take
the, the, the three that are called out specifically in the meeting materials. Section three dot three dot three dot one. Clarifying the two prints, two or more principal structures on one lot. I think, I know we, I think we are pretty well satisfied of the way that is that something we want to, uh, I don't know, uh is that something the board wants to uh approve for submission to the warrant?
Yeah. I'm comfortable with that, do we, do we have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, let me ask Fiona, Fiona, what was, you know, did you, what did you have in mind for these three items on the agenda? Three, 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 one, twelve, six, two, and four, two.
I, I just need clarification, um, or a vote rather, from the board to what, what to bring forward to put on the warrant, so the um proposal for three point three point three and for twelve point six, we all but finalized in the last meeting, but there was um but I just need to have a final vote of the board to bring those two forward, those were the uh, the fairly lighter um proposals, and then the third proposal for four point two, the proposed changes, um that one will warrant a bit more discussion as the board had asked me to do a uh some more research about how other communities are uh structuring their parking requirements and you know, if it's an employee count versus square footage count is more preferable, and I went through and researched a variety of communities and put in our, in the memo that's accompanying the proposed changes in the meeting materials and put forward suggestions for the bo- board ultimately to finalize this evening if, if possible, I think that these three are, these three zoning change proposals are in good shape and we can move those forward at least, and there's um a little bit more discussion that needs to be done for the parking, for the village mixed use, but we're continuing to have those conversations and we had a lot of progress today. Um, so that's, you know, that might be something that we, we won't get finalized, but in terms of three point, three point three, um twelve point six point two and hopefully four point two, because there, um, those, those three, we can, I'm hoping that we can come to a, you know, final agreement on this evening and put it on the warrant, and if we do, and you know, if, if four point two still doesn't seem to be ready for the board's eyes, and that's that's fine, I just want to, to get some, um, I guess, direction because we have our town meeting, uh, warrant article due date coming up quite soon.
So
technically March twenty-fourth, but I just want us to be able to, that, that'll be quickly approaching and we don't have much time between now and that March twenty-fourth deadline to, to get this through.
So three, three, three is on the screen now, I'll move that the board uh submit this to the May town meeting warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassenger.
Aye.
And I vote aye, I declare the motion carried unanimously with four members and one absent. And then
Twelve, six, two, this this, this just changes the
Put this forward, uh, so submit this to the warrant.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassenger.
Aye.
And I vote aye, I declare the motion carried unanimously for in favor, one absent. And then that brings us to four dot two.
And this is the Grafton Common Historic District.
Yes. So.
Is there, is this the one that still has uh maybe a little difference of opinion between the building commissioner and uh our idea, or is it the other, another one?
I think that's the other one. I think the, the only thing about this that I saw in some correspondence was, or in the planner's memo was that uh the Z B A chair had uh suggested something slightly different than this to, to uh distinguish between existing uses and new uses or existing buildings and new buildings.
Yeah.
I know we talked about that a bit at our last meeting and we, we, I think we were pretty comfortable with just keeping it simple here.
Yeah, I, I read what the memo said and Fiona can tell me if I'm wrong, or if anyone disagrees, is just that the Z B A chair was a, was looking at it as when we were initially going to bring it to town meeting, it was a little bit more restrictive and they had the concern on the ambiguity, and so he was suggesting language that more matched to what we were bringing before, but removing the ambiguity that he thought and
Fiona's hand is raised.
Go ahead Fiona.
Yeah, yes, so Justin, you, you, you basically hit the nail on the head with that, um, I wanted to follow up with Mr. McCusker of the Z B A because I know that he had been involved in this conversation last time, um, just to get his thoughts and concerns, and he, you know, we did, he did send me what his proposed changes were last time, which I outlined in the memo, but he did say that the way that this is written now is, is clear, and that I think that was the primary concern last time, and I think the uh, as long, you know, as long as the definition is, is clear and there's no, you know, room for uh ambiguity, and that's, that's the key point, and I think that then he agreed that the way that this was written was fine, um, Mr. Berger, uh, who's the zoning enforcement officer, has uh also vetted this and is in favor of this proposal as it's, as it's written, I mean, the, the area it, that it applied, I mean, the Grafton Common Historic District if you know the configuration of the, the common, you, you know, that this probably does makes, makes perfect sense, and every party has been vetted, um, that who could, uh, you know, who could possibly see potential issues. So the, the general consensus was that, yes, you know, this, this is good as written, and the planning department does agree, but obviously, the board is, is uh can can take, you know, take that information and kind of agree or disagree as, as you choose, but that was, that was the summary of how we got, that was, that's the easy part of this one, I guess, because most people agree.
Alright, so I'm comfortable with it, do I have a motion?
Well, Justin, if you, if I may.
Go ahead.
The, the way that the proposed changes are written incorporates some changes that are further down in the document, so I'm I would probably wait to do a motion until all of the parts are agreed on, I suppose, because it's the same section.
Yes, I
And there's a couple of changes.
I, I agree, I was staring at the screen and forgot there was an extra page.
No, yeah, no problem, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little bit longer, so it trails off into that second page, but I just wanted to point that out.
So, okay, so we're, we're basically good with this part of it and we'll uh
We'll touch on the other part.
Get back to the other parts.
We're good? Grab a good chair. Okay, so now as I think my internet may just suddenly be going slow. While loading things up. Fiona, do you want to just kick us off here for where your memory on where we left off was?
Yes, absolutely, so this, uh, this has been, um, a fifty, uh, this is, property is pertaining to fifty feet, fifty, Fallett Street, um, they have continued um to today, um, they, it's a hearing to consider a special permit and site plan uh approval request. Um, tonight, they will be speaking to um some requests made by the board to evaluate some additional options following their prior conversation with us. Um, so I, it's really kind of more their presentation, um, to kind of fill us in, um, we have been uh co- uh ta- talking to the applicant as well, uh, as the Concom and the other parties that they're currently um addressing. So it's more, they're a little bit further along with the, the Conservation Commission than they are with us, now we're just, we're kind of reviewing additional uh site options and potential with different heights, et cetera, following up on our previous hearing um this evening. Um, and the applicant can definitely uh feel free to, to provide any uh additional comment, and I think that the applicant will also be sharing, sharing some visuals, so they should have, uh should be able to get, provide some more insight there as well.
Come on up.
Okay, thank you. Michael Jaimo, representing Selco. Uh, doing business Verizon Wireless, and thank you for having us uh back tonight. We've uh, since the January ninth hearing, we've submitted a few things, uh, one was an alternatives analysis of um two other locations that you'd asked for uh some technical uh RF coverage maps for, and Soheil is here and he'll, he'll address those shortly, um. We've also gone through another round with the Conservation Commission. Site plans have been revised in ways that probably aren't material really to the, the tower itself, but had to do with some drainage and other things um at the entrance to the property, and, and the Conservation Commission's consultant has uh reviewed those, and my understanding is that those have passed muster. Um, Jesse Moreno can talk about that uh shortly. We've also seen uh Mr. Maxon's critique of the photo simulation, so we've brought somebody from Nexius tonight, Paul Phillips is here to address those. Um, I just want to, to just, as a preface, before we get into this, um before I ask Soheil to, to speak to the alternative heights and the alternative sites, th- the purpose of this site is to cover a particular coverage area, and so that's the reason it's located where it is, so we've evaluated these alternatives with that in mind, um, you know, both of the alternatives you asked us to, to analyze, one is somewhat southeast of the site, the other one's pretty far, far east of the site, and so just bear that in mind when you look at the coverage maps, that the area we're trying to cover up on uh Milbury Street is not reached by those two alternate sites, unfortunately. Um, and that's, you know, that'll be clear when uh Soheil reviews those photos, um. I think if that's okay, we would like to start with those alternatives first and have Soheil come up here and um explain to us what we've, what we're looking at and, and what he did as far as analyzing both the Providence Road site and the twenty-one Fallett Street site.
Certainly.
And I think
Almost any mic should work.
Okay, great, a- a- and um, you know, I think Natalie or someone has, has pu- put these up on the screen, which is great.
Yeah, that was, that was me that
That was you, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. For the record, again, my name's Soheil Usmani. I'm employed by C Square Systems, um, consulting for Verizon for the site in Grafton. Um, I put, I put together some additional slides to get a better understanding of what was presented last time. Um, as Mr. Maxon also pointed out, he wanted to see overlaid um height analyses on one uh, one map, which I have done, so supplement C that you see in front of you on the slide that has uh different colors, and I've just piled up all the layers, starting with the top one at ninety-six feet. Um, sorry, the blue is, um, blue, blue color being ninety-six feet, gray underneath it, you see a little spillover compared to the blue, and that's at hundred sixteen feet. Underneath that is uh hundred and thirty-six feet, which is yellow, and you can see some yellow coming out of underneath the blue and the gray. And finally, the proposed site coverage, hundred sixty-five feet, represented by red, which you see under all the other, all the above three layers of blue, gray, and yellow.
So, so just, so he'll just to make it clear if some people aren't following, or just so we get it on the record, so you've run four different heights on one plan, and the red coverage, which is what we're proposing, actually underlies all the different colors except for green and white on that plan, right, it underlies the blue would underlies the yellow and the gray, because the, at the red height, you can reach all those areas.
That is correct.
And then with the yellow height, you can reach all the areas except red, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And then with the gray areas, you reach all the areas except red and yellow, okay? And then, and then the blue reaches only what the blue reaches.
That is correct, thank you. And um, again, green is existing coverage, existing network coverage. Um, that is present in Grafton and the surrounding areas at the moment. Um, I have broken down or, um. Shown by coverage stats, uh, each height, what it's doing. If we go to. A slide that has three tables, um, I don't remember which one it is.
Can I ask you one more question about that last one, though? Could if you could put it back? There are white some white areas there. Is the idea that those would be areas that Verizon would need another site to cover those adequately? The areas to the south, uh, east into the far east into the northeast, for example, those white blocks?
If there is a need, yes, those would need to be covered by an additional site.
Okay. So that that's not an objective of this site. This site is intended to cover the areas. Uh, in the center and up to Milbury Street, if I understand it correctly.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um. There's a page that has the three tables. I just wanted to go to, yes, that one. Thank you. Um, so the if you look at the top table, that shows. The, um. Four, uh, five categories, population coverage, business population, area covered, roadway coverage and the structure counts covered. Um, so when you go towards the right-hand side, starting with hundred sixty-five feet, then you go to. Hundred thirty-six feet and you if you compare the population covered at one sixty-five versus one thirty-six. You see that at one sixty-five is five one one zero. Population count and then at one thirty-six, it drops down to four thousand six hundred seventy-seven. And further dropping the height, you know. There's a a drop in the numbers all across, uh, for that site. Um, this this is important to show. I think I mentioned last time as well. That just to get a visual on an A four, A four paper, you know, eight by eleven, eight and a half by eleven or eight, eleven and a half. It's hard to to, uh, just get an idea of what the difference is between. For instance, red and the yellow and the yellow and the blue and so forth. So this breaks down and gives you a, um, a delta in. The two different heights, you know, one sixty-five versus one thirty-six and one sixty-five versus the other two heights. And I've given that, um, difference. To the in the far three columns, the right to the to the right in in white. So there's a loss in coverage. And you can see the percentages in the last three columns on the right. Um, so. So you can see that, you know, from one sixty-five to one thirty-six is a drop by eight point five percent. Then you drop further one sixteen. You know, naturally six sixteen point seven percent and thirty-seven point three when you go to ninety-six feet. So just to give a a better understanding and quanti- you know, quantify. The the coverage map that that was in the first picture and similarly, if we go back to, I think, slide number two. Uh, that's one, yeah, that.
So this is this is one of the first alternative location.
Yes, sir. Uh, so if you just flip between the first slide and this slide. Yes, uh, you can see, you know, you can see how much more colors you see at. At any height, um, between the proposed site, um, and. The, um, the alternate location. And that is also represented, you know, again, the colors mean the same, uh, green being the existing coverage and then I've compared. All the same heights that I compared for the proposed site. And in the table, this, um, on the page with the tables, yes, the second one. If that was twenty-one Fallett, then. That would be. Yes, so the second table would be. The numbers representing the height, the height difference and as you drop from hundred sixty-five feet. All the way down to ninety-six feet, it just gives you the difference between the two heights. Um, one sixty-five minus one thirty-six, one sixty-five minus one sixteen and one sixty-five minus ninety-six feet. And towards the three right columns, you have the percentages and their difference. Um, finally, the.
Can we can we put it back just on, uh, D, D, the, uh.
Second slide.
Coverage plot for the town-owned site. This so this is twenty-one. Fallett's Fallett Street, which is the town-owned site. And if you see up. North, there's a a white area near the G in Grafton and along that stretch of Milbury Street. That that's a target area for this site. That's what. Verizon's trying to cover that area up there, which has an elementary school and, uh, you know, more traffic and and, uh, an area that right now doesn't get. Adequate coverage. This is the this particular location. The 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 town location does not reach that even at a a high height and you can see. Um, based on where that's located, it doesn't add marginally much to go a lot higher at that site. If you go back to the other one. Um, the proposed site, you can see at the higher heights. That does reach that area that that Verizon's trying to cover.
So to to ask if you have the answer handy at least is for the three sites, what's the actual elevation? You know, value either at the base or, you know, the dip between between them like for, you know, the height of the pole is one thing, but. What's the difference in elevation between the sites? Do you have that handy? This is for what you measured?
I I don't know the exact number, but I know, um, that. The proposed site is at a much i- is the highest elevation. I think it's, um, it's about. It's over four hundred feet if I remember correctly. And then the one, the twenty-one Fallett drops down and that is definitely much lower than the proposed site.
Right.
And and it's in a, you know, as you you can see, I don't know if there's a terrain map.
The ta- the tower height, the proposed tower height is is something like elevation four seventy-six.
Right.
On the on this, that's on our plans.
Okay.
And then that goes, the the twenty-one Fallett goes down to almost three hundred feet.
Yeah, because that's that's close to the river.
Right, yeah. Right, and we didn't we didn't pick a low site at that location. We picked a, you know. A fair a fair site. We weren't trying to find the the lowest location. It's just in a valley. It's a low place.
Yeah, I it was just a question that wasn't here, so.
So I I was gonna, I was going to compare the the stats.
One sec.
Sorry, go ahead.
Now, I want to talk about the choice of sites here first. First of all, where did this piece of land get picked? It according to Grafton Map Geo, it belongs to the town, hasn't been offered up or anything. And our map Geo says that it belongs to the town of Grafton. Forty-four Milbury Street, which is actually the address of the Water District, which is something different. So it's all very confusing. But that wasn't what I was looking for for a location. I was looking for and we discussed. Just on the property that your proposal is on. Move basically north a bit. There's a ridge there. Go over the ridge and come down the other side a bit. And you should, you I I think it looked to us at the time, David will be able to help much more. Uh, it looked like you could get a good bit less. A tower that wa- was not that mu- uh, not nearly as far above the terrain. Uh. That would give, it would seem pretty good coverage, maybe even better coverage into some of those problem areas. David?
Mr. Maxon?
You're you're muted.
I had my map up over my microphone button, so I couldn't find my microphone button. David Maxon with Isotrop, uh, working for the Board on this, uh, application. Uh, yeah, we did discuss that last time. Um, I thought we had some answers to that. Did we? Did we see any coverage from the alternative further north or, uh, maybe the applicant can remind us how? How we had left that when we discussed it.
We we you you talked, I said something like I just said and you said, yes, that's sort of a. Bringing together of several of the things that we've talked about. And I think system with a comment that was in your initial report. Obviously, if you go a hundred feet lower down into the lowland. On that other piece of to- uh, town land, uh, you're gonna have to be high. You know, but you have to be able to see over this hill that we're talking about.
Yeah, this is David. Uh, I can respond to the thinking behind all that when when you're ready. I don't know if you want to continue with the applicant or if you want me to fill in. On that right now. I did not hear that.
Uh, why don't we continue with the applicant and then come back and parse out the pieces?
Okay, that works for me.
Okay, so she wanted, Soheil, you want to talk about the, um, Providence Street, which I know.
Yeah.
Both both twenty-one Fallett and Providence Street were specifically asked for by the Board. That's why we've looked at them.
Who asked? Who asked for twenty-one Fallett Street?
That was at my direction and I can explain that, but I don't know if you want to explain that now or later.
So sort of I asked for it because of David Max and Max mentioning it, but yeah, let's. Let's let the applicant go and then we'll get back to the explanation on the site choice.
Yeah, the town has put RFPs out on the twenty-one Fallett Street site, whether it's the Water District or the town. They've done that.
Okay.
So in the past. Alright, are we done with twenty-one?
Yes, we're done with twenty-one. Uh, and then the third slide, this is, yes, that one. Um, just if you can please go back to the first, second and third and then, yes, the first. That just to give you a quick idea, if you can, you know, get a visualization of what the first one, the proposed site does compared to. The other two sites. Um. First of all, um, the Providence Road Site is quite far east and, you know, it's. It's further away from the intended, um, coverage area that that Verizon's trying to fill. Um, and, you know, it doesn't cover as much as. The proposed site and the the twenty-one Fallett site as well. Um, I've done the same thing with this site. Um, I've broken down the four heights, shown the height analysis. Just to, um, represent, you know, in a similar fashion as I've done with the other two. So if you go back to the next slide with the tables. Please. Um, what I've done here is. If you look at the, uh, fifty-eight Fallett, which is the first table. Second one is a twenty-one Fallett and third one is a one eighty-eight Providence Road. So. A comparison between all three in one screenshot is easier to comprehend. Because, uh, you can see, you know, let's say hundred sixty-five feet, the light blue column, the first column. Um, and hundred sixty-five feet, if we look at just the population coverage, that's. Uh, five thousand one one zero at hundred sixty-five feet for proposed site. If you go to twenty-one Fallett, it dro- drops down to three thousand eight hundred ten. And for the one eighty-eight Providence Site, it's even lower. It's three thousand five hundred nineteen. And all the other stats are, um, lower compared to the proposed site. One other thing that I did to give a visual understanding is I prepared. Uh, incremental road coverage map because, you know, I heard last time or or prior to that. Uh, that the proposed site is covering more of the neighboring town compared to the Grafton area. And so I put together and I wanted to see for myself as well, yes, those those are the red that you see. Are the roads, the incremental roads on top of the existing, um, so again, the green. Coverage is the existing coverage and then. The red color represents the incremental coverage that you will, you know, you will get. With the proposed site at hundred sixty-five feet. Um, if you go to the next slide, that's twenty-one Fallett, hundred sixty-five feet. And then the next one is Providence Road Site. So if you go flip between the three, you can easily see how much more. Coverage you're getting from, um, the proposed site, not only in Grafton, but also in the neighboring town.
So to ask on this on the table, one thought and question I'd have just to be completely clear. The, for example, your coverage at one sixty-five feet on population coverage or, you know, whatever, any any of the numbers in there, is that? The incremental coverage above the existing or is that all-inclusive?
That is correct, incremental.
Okay.
So those are, those are the pop, that's the population and the other measures that are seeing improved coverage.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
It's it's not that they're completely dead now. It's just that their their signal is below the level that's generally considered acceptable.
Yes, good, thank you. That's right.
Okay, um, so this this is our, this was our site analysis and our height analysis. We do also want to talk about the, um. The photo sims and and then to the extent that the board is interested, I'll have Jesse explains what's changed on the site plans, just so you know. There's nothing, um, significant in terms of tower location, but did you want to go through?
Yep.
The technical stuff with Mr. Maxon first or how would you like to proceed?
I I think it might make sense just for Flo to go over the locations and, you know, such with Mr. Maxim and the questions that Mr. Hassenger had. Right now and then we can then touch base on the pictures.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's, you know, probably probably good to address questions and comments about the site locations.
Absolutely.
Okay, this is David. I'll I'll start.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um. Yes, if you, uh, go to the first map, the first slide, we'll start there. Um, and. Thank you, uh, Mr. Usmani for the, uh, explanation. I think this this was a. Good way to do it. I want to clarify one other factor and I think you explained that when you explained incremental and that is that. The the red, yellow, gray and blue overlays are stacked one above the other as Mr. Jaimo was explaining. And also the green overlay of existing coverage is on top of that. Uh, and if you took the green overlay away, you'd see more blue. And potentially more of the other colors as well. Is is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, this is as as he referred to it as incremental coverage. It's the difference between existing coverage and what it would be adding. When, uh, the population and area counts and all those things in the table were computed, was that on the incremental coverage or the total coverage?
That was in the incremental coverage.
Uh, so that just represents the population within the the blue areas that we see on the map, for instance.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what what I talked about, uh, last time or the time before was, um. Uh, that you can illuminate a valley almost as well, sometimes better. By having a tower in the valley rather than on top of the hill on one side. And I may have mentioned our experience in Ashland, New Hampshire. Where that was exactly what happened is that we used the, um, wastewater treatment plant next to the river. To avoid having a tower on a prominent, um, uh, outcropping overlooking the valley. Now that was a very clear valley. It's a much more hilly or mountainous kind of terrain than this is. But the principle is the same. And in fact, if you compare the blue, please click to the next one. Uh, of. The twenty-one Fallett Street in Grafton. This is, uh, very good. Um, it does miss the one thing that Mr. Jaimo pointed out and that is the 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 coverage that reaches to Milbury Street in red. On the previous image, but it doesn't reach into Milbury and Sutton. Uh, so if we go back, thank you to the first slide. Um, we see that there is some incremental improvement on a few roads in, uh. Uh, Milbury and Sutton and the, we don't need to go to them, but the roadmaps help illustrate that as well. But, uh, an awful lot of the coverage is in in. But, uh, an awful lot of the coverage is in, in Grafton, and if you look at the, the, the symbol for the cell site, it has three wedges. And those wedges represent the three sector antennas and they represent the angle at which, at least for the purposes of modeling, they've been pointed. Now, they may adjust that when they get into the field and actually start operating the system, but fundamentally, that's, that's the, the design, uh, objective as shown. So what we have is two sectors serving Grafton and one sector that's basically serving, uh, Milbury and Sutton. Uh, if we go ahead to the next slide, what we see is that because we've gone down behind the hill, we're below it, we cannot illuminate Milbury and Sutton, but now the town of Grafton has three sectors serving it, which in the long run, as more and more capacity is demanded of the cell site, um, Grafton gets the benefit of three sectors instead of two. Uh, as Mr. Jaimo said, their coverage objective includes these other locations in, uh, Milbury and Sutton. Um, and that, that may be the case. So one of the questions the, uh, the, the town and the board might have for itself is, um, is the benefit of using a lower elevation facility that's not on a prominent hilltop that to illuminate most of this area in Grafton that, that needs illuminating, um, uh, better overall than using the, uh, the, the, the high location at the proposed site? And in doing so, does that put the, uh, the town at any risk of effectively prohibiting the prob, the, the provision of personal wireless services by, um, not allowing Verizon to reach Milbury and Sutton from a, a Grafton location? It's a complicated question and it's something that if it's of interest to the board, it, it would be, um, uh, something to look for advice counsel. So I'd point out, a- as, as I did a moment ago, Mr. Jaimo's point that the one thing that the twenty-one Folet Street location fails to reach is that little stretch of Milbury Street that, uh, is shown in the red, uh, on the previous map. And you click back to it, yeah. So, um, that's the, perhaps the one major, uh, difference between the, the two facilities. Now, I mentioned twenty-one Folet because there is a solar, uh, farm there and it is a town property and I had heard that it had been put up in the past, uh, made available under RFP for a wireless tower. Then the other location which I have less confidence in, and we can go click to the third map, is the one that's on Providence Road. And I think, as I recall, that was the nearest one that was in, on a, on a, on a property that, um, was, uh, where it would have been allowed. Without, uh, I think, what, variance, um, I'm hoping remembering my facts correctly here. And so, um, I had pointed that out and asked the applicant to show that on some of their, their mapping and they did, uh, do that at, at a, uh, with some follow-up information. So, what that demonstrates is that, that, I think that's an industrial parcel, that site is not, not very good and can, I, in my opinion, can be, um, uh, just ignored. Uh, but the twenty-one Folet Street site, because it's available, because we know it can be, uh, RF, put out to RFP again if the town were so interested, um, and because it provides so much coverage in Grafton, except that one spot on Milbury Street, it's, uh, it, it's something to consider as an alternative. Um, and I think you've heard from the applicant, the reasons why they would certainly prefer the location they proposed because, um, it does also reach some, some important places to them in Milbury and, and Sutton.
Yeah, just as a point of information, one eighty, one eighty-eight Providence Road Site is an area, it's, it's, it's a portion of a parcel, zoned community business. And it was many years ago, there were plans to build a shopping center there, but that never came to fruition, but it's still zoned as community business because it was once upon a time intended to be a shopping center, for what that's worth. But as you say, David, there's, you know, the, the wireless coverage characteristics of that site aren't really, uh, appropriate for serious consideration.
Right. So I don't really have anything else to, to clarify with, with this, just, uh, to kind of help you understand why we are looking at these two as potential alternative sites. Uh, I'm not sure how we ended up not pursuing something further north on the, uh, on the proposed property. I do recall us discussing it, but I don't recall, um, the upshot of that.
Yeah, I suspect the board would be interested in understanding, uh, why such a location can't be considered or what the pros and cons are, but.
I think, I think we probably have to run some data on that, wouldn't we, Sahil? To find out, I mean, you know, we do know there are some, uh, perhaps real estate constraints to where we're located on this site, I'm not sure you care about that, but that's, that's a fact, right? The, the Sutton Board has conditioned this site on a special permit in Sutton and, and has carved out the area at the top of the hill where we're proposing to go as a location for a cell site, but that's, um, that's a real estate issue. If you want the technical answer, we're gonna have to run some, yeah, some numbers.
Definitely appreciate any and all information which, which would include the technical side as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, 'cause I think, you know, it seems to me that the board is interested in trying to be sure that, you know, all plausible alternatives has been considered and that, you know, when it gets right down to it, it was if, if this site is going to be the site, you know, we need to be convinced that it's really the best site, the best available site.
Mike, um,
Well.
Mr. Jim, um, it would, it would help to know the exact location and then if that piece of property can be, you know, taken forward and to lease and with the landlord and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, but, but in terms of the technical stuff, we, you need to know where on the site David's talking about and I guess that's the, a question for you, David.
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, and I don't have a, a specific, uh, proposal. I'm, uh, yes, I, I'm, uh, I recall looking at this and, and considering it and not sure why we didn't come up with a, uh, uh, a proposed alternative location, but, uh, we'll have to look in the record, see whether there was some, some reasoning that, that we didn't, didn't go there or whether it was just overlooked.
One, one thing that comes to my mind, uh, just quickly, quickly looking at the, the particular parcel at fifty-eight Folet Street and the topography, and that is, and I vaguely recall this came up in one of our discussions, that locating the tower farther to the north might bring it too close to the property boundary. So there, you know, there, there, there are the requirements of the zoning bylaw that, you know, they say, how far the tower needs to be from the edge of the property. So if you're looking specifically at this parcel, then the bo, property boundaries may be constraining the tower location.
But it does narrow in the back, the property's a wedge.
And so there's, that's a potential concern that, and of course, the abutting properties on, on the, the north and east side of Lazy Hill, I don't know whether you've explored with those property owners the possibility of locating a tower on, on a parcel other than the one at fifty-eight Folet Street?
Yes, we gave you a site alternatives analysis that looked at a couple of those parcels where there just was not interest from the landowner.
Yeah. That was kind of, while, while the locations might be superior for the purposes of the coverage we're trying to achieve, if the landowner is not interested, there's not much you can do.
Right, right, and I thi, I think there was one, there was one that provided some level of coverage if it, potentially if it could have been used, it's just not something that the owner was interested in, Sean had spoken with them.
Is it possible to bring up the RF report and look at this map on the screen so they can?
Do you have that, do you have that, Mr. Clark?
It's in there, it's in the package.
Yeah, I just don't know if they've got everything pulled up or not.
Let me see.
I think it's.
Was it the April twenty-sixth?
First few documents, I think.
Was that the one that was?
The RF report?
Yes, sir.
April twenty-sixth.
Exhibit three?
Yep.
Yeah, let me get that up here.
The terrain map, please.
And of course, it doesn't help that these are all sideways. Actually, maybe I can do something about that.
GISP user between?
I'm not quite sure what I'm looking for here.
Well, Dave preps this, once we get through this part of the discussion, does the board prefer if I open to the public for a discussion on this particular topic? It, the narrow scope of what we just talked about first and then go back to public after other topics or close through what we feel we need to talk about first and then open to the public? Any preference?
For, for us?
For the, for the board, sorry.
Yeah, okay. I'm trying to, I'm trying to read through last transcript to see if I can find the answer to your question from earlier.
There's something from the public, it's new.
Yeah.
All right. I'm not sure.
There you go.
And this is the one?
No, the, it's, I think, four slides later. After this one. Yes, that one.
That one.
So, um, Mr. Maxon, if you can help a little bit and point to where you would like to, um, 'cause I can, I can choose any location that is good for RF coverage and come back with some coverage plots and they, that may not work, uh, for the town. So I just want to make sure that the location that I'm taking with me or a couple of locations, uh, will be the right ones.
Okay, um, yes, my mic is unmuted, all right. The, um, if we just note on this map that the, that the, the red part, the, the high point, the high area of the hill runs sort of north, northwest. And then if it's possible to go to the site plan, um, I know it, as you pull up another document, but, uh, uh, Site Plan C1, which is, it's like the second plan in the, uh, Exhibit Two Plans.
All right, let's see if we can find that.
All right, so I've just been looking at this also on my, uh, my GIS with property lines and elevation and that sort of thing. Um, and in a general sense, if you follow that long, uh, thousand and twenty-three foot line toward the property line, oh dear. If you go about halfway, about five hundred feet, give or take, uh, the elevation is higher roughly, um, because it crosses, it's, it's above five hundred feet. Um, and perhaps that means that a, a lower tower might suffice as well. But that does increase the distance between the tower and the aerial circle residential area in Sutton that, where it's presently most, would be most visible. So, Mr. Hassinger, is that along the lines of what you've been thinking as well?
I'm not sure anymore.
Di, David, I can, I can tell you, I just looked at the transcript of last session very quickly and I believe at the time you asked about moving east, not north. Um, so the, the question was whether if we moved it east, there would be some advantage. I don't think we ever reached a, a conclusion or, or that that wasn't necessarily intended for follow-up. I think Mr. Hassinger had suggested it would be worth looking into at some point. Um, I would point out that moving it east moves it closer to Mr. Ray's property. It does move it further from, from the Sutton properties, however. But would you like us to look at east? Do you want us to look at north? What's, what's the suggestion?
Well, thank you for that. Was it in your view of the, uh, discussion? Uh, was east suggested by someone other than myself?
Boy, David, I don't know, it's, it's, we've got this stenographer and she's been writing stuff down and she wrote stuff down last time and I just happened to try to spin through it quickly.
Okay, uh, 'cause I think that, I'm, having mentioned that, I think I'm recalling there was some discussion of the idea of moving it away from the aerial circle development. Um, is, i, was there an issue that was keeping us from talking about moving it north? Is there a, a terrain issue or a wetlands issue?
I vaguely recall terrain saying, the applicant mentioning that it'd be just more difficult or embosser to get up further up the hill. I don't, that's a vague memory though, to be fair.
Yeah, I think this came pretty close to the end of the hearing, I think people kind of wore out, is what happened.
I, I think moving kind of along this line, it's moving, uh, like north, northwest or, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's moving a little bit to the west of north and it's following fairly closely a contour line. So it's, it, it's not going up a whole, it's go, it's going up some in elevation, it looks like, just kind of eyeballing the terrain here, but, uh, yeah, that, and it's, it's kind of going, it, it may be going a little bit north of the peak of the hill, which may, may possibly result in a lower tower height giving good coverage along Milbury Street. You'd, you'd have to analyze that, but it'll.
Can I just ask something? Through the board or to Mike directly? If, um, Mr. Maxon or, or somebody can send us the exact location or locations that we can look at, you know, doesn't have to be identified now.
David, would you be able, would you be able to give him a, a Latin long for what you're looking at? Not now, at some point?
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with staff on that, come up with something.
Okay, and, and just, I, I mean, I can read what, uh, was said the last time. Uh, what if the tower placed more to the east at a lower elevation, so it takes advantage of distance and reduction in elevation to reduce or perhaps even eliminate visual impact on the residential development over the line in Sutton, whatever that's called, aerial circle? Is there a way to do that, get some coverage thrown into the direction of those residents because they're benefiting from this tower significantly in terms of wireless coverage without shifting undesirable impacts to other residences in Grafton? That was, that was the gist of the conversation.
I saw Fiona's hand and I saw Bob's.
Yeah, it was more of a real estate issue, as I recall, which is not the planning board's problem. I mean, the applicant can speak to that, but it wasn't constraints that were associated. It was more of a real estate issue. Feel free to
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I don't think we addressed the real estate issues at all last time. We pretty much wrapped up at that point, but um that it there is a real estate issue. I mean, that's that's a fact.
Right. Right, that would be the dominant issue is my understanding at this time, which is not really the planning board's issue this evening. But just want to bring that to the attention of the board.
Thank you. Bob?
My my recollection of the bit of conversation that I was talking about was when we were saying that we we were seeing a lot of coverage, new coverage being provided where there's already coverage to the south and west over in Sutton and and whatever over that direction. But that was already covered. And uh, so maybe there would be no harm in sacrificing that to move the tower. Uh, and at that time, my there had been talk about just going north. But I think we're I think we're not necessarily doing the right thing here. Our job is to our job is not to design what they do. My my problem is they want a tower that's way too high. And uh I think they need to find what they can do that'll serve them best at a height that fits with Grafton. And I think they can do that. We don't have to find properties and whatnot. If if they want to get at least my vote on approval.
Well, we'll certainly, I mean, we've we've analyzed, Mr. Hassner, we have analyzed some lower heights. We can we can try to tweak that and
Yeah.
See, see what we can do.
I understand that. I'm saying you're gonna have it's a trade off. How many how many possible uh road miles or how many possible users you're gonna serve with this tower versus the difficulty of getting a getting a accepting. Okay?
Yeah, I think I agree with you, Bob. I also think that it still makes sense for to let us have David Maxon do that.
Well, I think, well, David can do as much as he likes with that, but it's the people who are want to build the tower and provide the services that need to figure out uh how did
This is David. If I could just interject, um, one of the things that I do with zoning boards in these processes relates to the gathering of evidence regarding the potential for alternatives. So that if a denial occurs, uh, the board has some confidence that there's another way to address the coverage problem in the town. Um, and that is all telecommunications act oriented stuff, and I am not a lawyer. There's my disclaimer. Uh, so that's why we're gathering facts on on these alternatives to the the level of uh uh analysis that we're doing. Uh, I do agree that at some point you sure have to fish or cut bait and and decide whether it's worth trouble to to go further. The applicant seems willing to look at an alternative location on the parcel. If that will help mitigate the the visual impacts that are being um, that 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 people have expressed concerns about. Looking at it, I think there is so much cleared land around that aerial circle development that even if we move to the facility five or six hundred feet to the north um, and because it's on the hill and and this development is on one side of the hill, that it will still be quite visible to that development, maybe less. Uh, and maybe if it's at ten or twenty or thirty feet higher elevation, ground elevation, the tower would not need to be as tall. So it might be something worth uh spending a little bit of time on since the applicant seems to be willing to do so.
I, yeah, I think I think we're willing to have so he'll run some numbers, but whether whether it's practical or not, David, I think there's lots of reasons why it may not be practical. But that's, you know, if 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 you're looking for the technical information, we can give you technical information. Remember, another part of this coverage area, though, is is Main Street, which is to the south of this site. So moving it north doesn't do a lot for for getting it down to Main Street either. It's not, and it's not just, uh, I think we said this the last time, too. It's not. It's not just Sutton and Millbury, although from the telecommunications act standpoint, the town lines are kind of immaterial. But the coverage area includes areas to the south of this site in Sutton, in um, Grafton, as well as to the north of the site in Grafton. So. Okay, should we talk about photo simulations?
Yeah, I I think having no strong opinion from the board on public, I think it makes more sense for us just to go through our stuff and then bring the public up for any comment that was discussed tonight for to go from there.
So we should go through?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So from a photo simulation standpoint, there was some question in David. Uh, Maxon did a a report in which he, I think he made some assumptions and analyzed the um the photo simulation study. So so I've got Paul Phillips here to answer questions. He's from Nexius. He actually did the um the photo simulation study, but I can also tell you based on discussions I had with him and others at the firm, at his firm to compare, uh, to confirm what their process was. They they flew this balloon. It was a tethered line. It was tethered at a height that was slightly higher than the proposed height of the tower, so something like a hundred and seventy-six feet instead of a hundred and seventy feet to account for the fact that there might be some wind. The wind was very low that morning. It flew from nine o'clock to three o'clock. The photos were taken in the uh, you know, nine thirty and on range, um, and 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 Paul has that exact times on those, but they were taken at times when the wind was was pretty low. The photos are taken from established locations with the with where the um exact location of the photo is is recorded. And then the uh company runs a program called Photomax, which allows them to create a three dimensional model of a tower and to fix the location from which the photos were taken on a basically, I think, a a mesh GIS type mesh. The um and this is very similar to how other uh companies do this, and I think it's similar to what David was suggesting was best best practice. The um the photos are then uh the the representation of the tower from these different angles is then placed into a Photoshop program with the photo that was taken so that the uh the photo and the simulated tower can be merged so that it's the right height above the tree line, et cetera, the right relationship to the point from which the photo was taken. And those are the photographs that you've seen. In in reading David's uh comments on the and I don't want to put words in your mouth, David. I know you're gonna correct me if you disagree with me, but I believe you um had concluded that from the standpoint of the um the balloon height, that the idea of of allowing for some uh additional line to account for wind or or such was the correct thing. I don't think it was laser established. It was um established by the length of the line, which is a pretty common technique, as I think you know. Um, I also think you agreed that the um the representation of the tower in terms of the width of the antennas and the height above the tree line seem to your estimation to be about right, and I think that should correspond to what we understand the Nexius does when they do these, which is a a pretty formal process of using this program and uh plugging the the locations and the angles in from where the photos were taken. And then your third critique had to do with the basically the field of vision of the photos. So these these some of these photos in your estimation were taken at a wider field of vision than they should have been, and and you cropped them. But again, that's not going to change the relative height or relative location of where the superimposed tower is on the on the photo, which is going to give you less background. And the example you included showed it it basically looked like you'd walked across the street from the photo that was taken to the photo that you had concluded met the right field of vision. So uh, we would stand by our photo simulations as being accurate. You know, if if people want to look at them like this or something, so they see them cropped, it'll look a little bit different, but I don't think it changes where you're going to see them from or relatively how much above or below the tree line they're going to be at that location. So, um, if you have questions for Mr. Phillips or me on this, um, be happy to field those.
I'm by far not an expert on that. So I'll I'll say if any member of the board or even Mr. Maxim has clarifying questions or anything further they want to discuss, we can bring Paul right up, but otherwise
Okay.
we can afford. I see a hand, so Paul, why don't you come up and just join us at any mic? Thank you.
I'm Paul Phillips. I'm the GIS CAD manager at Nexius.
So, Bob, I saw your hand first.
Oh, um, I was gonna ask David or maybe you um staff. I took some Linda and I took some pictures out there, which I mentioned, and I think I was asked to pass on those, and I think I did send a couple, and I'm not sure I see them anywhere in the record. And I don't know if David got to look at them, but they were from, I I think, pretty much exactly this same situation. Yeah, that's
That's that's one of yours, Bob.
Yeah, is that is that in the rec- record there?
It is. It's on the it's on the project page on the website.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, I I just um you compare that against the no tower picture from uh uh, from Verizon, from the applicant. And uh, you may get us. It seemed to me the the compares as I can make, I got a sense of it being bigger, but more more imposing than uh the picture that the simulation was built from. So I I just was wondering if David looked at that or had any did that provide any input or any additional thought?
Uh, this is David. Um, yes, I received those pictures and looked at them. Uh, and I think I recall discussing with you at the last meeting whether you knew what uh
Oh, yeah.
effective focal length was for the the camera settings, and I think we established that that was not something you were aware of.
That's just not. You'd have to do some more of the uh math to actually figure it out, but um it was it was the choice on my camera that would be uh, the closest to what you're calling a normal lens.
Right.
You know, this is an iPhone and and it's seven millimeters or whatever, but when you look coverage areas and all of that, I compared this against a three by whatever, not the full frame, but my Nikon is whatever the smaller sensor is. But I but then the normal lens for that sensor is thirty-five millimeters, as I understand it, and I compared iPhone coverage, you know, how wide and how high is it versus how high and how wide was my Nikon? Um, and it was pretty pretty well at a normal lens. Okay.
Right.
And anyway, that that was just, I I looked at the picture here in in the new stuff.
And for me, that was helpful because that helped confirm my hunch and then my calculations that the photos were taken with a fairly wide angle. Uh, uh, focal length. And uh, that can make a difference in terms of how you perceive a picture that's a a full page or a half page large. And uh it's just one of the techniques for for, and it's a common technique. As we're talking about common techniques, it's a common technique to uh use a wide angle lens to uh help reduce the perceived impact of a tower. As for tethering a balloon, uh, laser rangefinders are so inexpensive these days that uh a lot of the people who do these balloon tests uh do go out and measure the um the the balloon's height when it is uh generally quiescent. You know, there might be a five knot wind or whatever that's putting a bit of a uh, a lay on the the balloon and the tether. You'd measure it when it's steady and it's not bouncing around, and you you know exactly what the height is, and you're not guessing how much uh line you need to pay out. Uh, so those are just techniques to to do things that are in a more deterministic way, a little less relying on the art uh of the uh, the operator. And the same thing goes for for the photographs. I relied on the description given of the methodology in the report. Um, so I I think, and I've heard a description that is pretty clearly representing what the description of the methodology said. So, uh eh, there are more deterministic ways of doing 3D modeling uh than uh going to Photoshop. For instance, you bring the the image into CAD, and if you have the application in CAD, you do it there, and uh uh, it can be more, as I say, deterministic. But uh, in terms of the height, I think the approximation is okay. What we're not certain about is whether the 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 proportions, the breadth of the tower is proportionate to the exposed height of the tower above the tree line. Uh, and perhaps the uh GIS specialists can talk a little bit about how they made sure not only they got the height right, but they got the the mass of the structure right for that distance.
Well, um, our our goal was to produce realistic representation of what the tower might look like. There again, as you know, these are not perfectly accurate things that we're doing here. Uh, we use the 3D Max software. And the tower model is is modeled in that software. And the photograph is used as a backdrop in that software. And it's at the same resolution so that when it comes out of there and goes into the Photoshop to clean up and layer the objects in the front, it's essentially the same size. As far as the uh focal length of the camera, basically, we rely on the metadata from what these things were taken with an iPad. It's telling me the focal length here was three millimeters. If that helps you. Uh, essentially, I'm the one that took the photos. And eh, essentially, I just hold it out at the right height to get a few in the pad that looks the same. That's what I'm seeing with my eye. Press the button, and we save the picture. Those are all sent to uh our graphic artists, people that bring this into CAD and 3D Max, do the rendering, do the model building, and then bring it back into Photoshop and prepare the slides that you see. I think overall we're fairly close. I don't see that it's a major difference from my perspective. I don't know if that helps you, but that's what I got to offer.
Thank you.
Anything further come to mind from any members of the board or even Mr. Maxon? And we've already discussed on this point.
Um, just just give me a second. I'm trying to I don't know whether I can find the metadata real quick online just.
I am recalling you said it was seven millimeters.
Yeah, but I'm I want to be sure I'm the tool I'm using is not helping me. Uh, all right. I I think that that that's what sticks in my head. I think it was the this camera has a point five, a one, and a one, and a two point five, and the two point five is the close is, you know, they call it, that's the labels in in the user interface. The two point five is actually the closest to, they call it a telephone, the closest to a normal view, normal lens.
Now, I believe you mentioned the last thing. Now, I believe you mentioned the last thing to talk about from your standpoint tonight is the change to the site plan.
Yeah, Jesse, do you want to, um, just explain what's changed in the site plan since the last time these. The, the new ones are posted on your website as of, I think, today, but, um. Hi, my name is Jesse Moreno, I'm with Proterra Design Group. If, um, it's possible to bring up the site plans, you could bring it. Sheet seven? Are they on the website yet?
Exhibit thirty-seven.
Really, to the naked eye, it's going to be difficult to see, but basically the plan edits were the result of. Two different peer reviews that occurred. Um, one was EcoTech, um, through the CONSCOM, they reviewed, uh, sort of wetland regulations. Um, and where the, in the beginning of the site where we have the crossing, where, um, and how the, um. The mitigation area for the wetland fill, where that was located. Um, there was also a site plan. Um, special permit and stormwater regs review by Graves Engineering. So, uh, both of those consultants, um, prepared letters. And as a response to those letters, we, we had, um, created a letter and these plans. Um, and, and basically, uh, to run through them. They wanted to, they asked us to show, uh, you know, cuts and fills on there. Um, um, there was a couple of areas where we had, uh, a typo on the, a, a spot shot. Um, which we corrected, um, they asked us to, um, create a wider berm at one of the. Stormwater areas, which, which we did. Um, down at the beginning of the site, um, there's a crossing where there's some culverts. They wanted to clarify the direction of flow on those culverts, which we did. They also add, asked us to add an additional covert, uh, which was done as well. Um, we adjusted the entrance to meet the town curb cut, um, application. Um, where we provided a, a small paved apron and a lay down area that was, uh, suggested. And again, we also, um, adjusted the amount and the location of the wetland replication plan. Uh, so these were all small changes to the plan, basically that occurred. Um, sort of in the first, you know, five hundred feet or so of the driveway. The location of the tower, um, you know, where it was located, the grading, all that up there was basically remained unchanged. Um, there was one, um. There was one question brought up by one of the reviewers regarding landscaping. Um, the regs, uh, say something, uh, the, the wireless regs have something about, um, providing some landscaping. Um, to, to shield the compound from a butters. Obviously, on this site, we're about five hundred feet from, you know, four hundred fifty, five hundred feet from the nearest butter. We're in the middle of the woods, so up in that area, we did not put landscape plantings. Um, in that location, uh, where we did put them was down by the entrance. Um, between, uh, the closest neighbor, uh, we felt that was a better, better spot to put. Um, um, some screening plantings, um, so that was really the, the edits to the site.
So is there anything you wanted to particularly point out on the plans here?
I could, but it's, I don't, unless you guys got questions about something, we can drill right down into it if you'd like, but.
Yeah, if anybody wants to look at a particular page in the plans.
We could do that.
Say the word, but.
You said, if you go to that page seven here, I could point out to the areas where we did, did some things, but again, um. You know, so it'd be, it'd be sort of, yeah, right where your cursor is there down at the beginning. Um, yep, right there where. Basically, it was, um, the driveway's widened some and we, we have a, a paved apron as the town. Requires, um, that's the area down there where we show the. Um, additional covert and, um, as you, as you come up the drive on your left hand side, there's a couple of detention basins. And, uh, those were the mining, minor grading adjustments were, were made to those, but they're. You know, at this scale, they're really difficult to see, they were just, uh, spot shots and kind of minutia. Uh, that the, um, review engineer picked up and, uh, we corrected.
Any questions regarding site plan from the board? I don't see any. Is there anything more you wanted to discuss from your end?
No, I mean, we would, we would request a continuance to bring back to the board if there's any other information you want. I mean, we feel like we've submitted a lot to the board, there's a lot in play, there are, I guess, a couple of open questions based on some. Comments that, uh, folks have made tonight about wanting us to do a little more analysis on a couple of things.
Yeah.
We're happy to do that, but we'd like to, you know, kind of have everything. The board thinks it wants to see, so we can come back and, and kind of wrap this up with a bow, we could.
I understand that, before I get to that for the board, I'm going to make sure I let the public have an opportunity to speak as well, so. Anyone who wants to. Talk about anything tonight or anything from past meetings that just hasn't been discussed already, I'm happy to. Have any member from the public on Zoom or in person.
Adam Murray, uh, forty-two Phulet Street.
Just a little thing on moving the tower, site locations are thinking about it around. Lazy Hill. Anywhere you move that tower on Lazy Hill, it's going to be visually prominent. So I don't know if moving it around really makes a difference. I also don't know why, um, it's being so much discussed when it's in our bylaws. That says it has to be sighted below visually prominent ridge lines. Which Lazy Hill is, to my knowledge, may be the most visually prominent ridgeline in the town of Grafton. So I think, uh, a compromise with coverage would have been the other Phulet Street location. Twenty-one, I think, with coverage. I also noticed that they're not talking about giving people coverage that they don't have, they're talking about filling in maybe a little better coverage for people. In certain. Small locations along Milbury Street.
Um. Another thing I'd just like to bring up to the board's attention too is concerning this parcel of land is. Uh, in the minutes of the Sutton Town, they did not want to do that deal. They said that they had a fiduciary responsibility to their citizens. Not to push that into litigation, that they were worried about that, but that doesn't mean they wanted to do it, they were very. Um, I don't know the word, but they, they didn't want to do it. And they said the reason they agreed to it was they were worried about litigation. Um, so there's definitely a, certainly a lot of questions, as you well know, about that, even though I know that's not under your direct purview. Um, so I'd just like to say I, that and. I don't think that they've proven, or it still needs to be up for debate a little bit about. Uh, substantial evidence that the facility cannot by technical necessity feasibly be located in a non-residential zone. I don't think that's been gone over enough. Um, and like I said, I think, you know, when you're talking about you can add twenty feet to this tower after the fact. Put two more arrays of six foot cans on it. I don't know how small this tower would be and what coverage it would be if it was actually sighted below. Lazy Hill ridgeline. Um, and I think, uh, it hasn't been proven that, that, that would, uh, work for anybody. Um. And I just think that the general compatibility with adjacent properties and other properties in the district is not met. And, uh. And that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Fiona, go ahead.
I just want to make a point to the board that we also really need to understand what the outcome is going to be. For this project during the Conservation Commission public hearing process, so just something to bear in mind. We're not probably going to be able to do much until we hear about the outcome of, of that process. We can, we, uh, obviously, we should still consider to, uh, consider the. Follow-up data that the applicant is proposing and continue to have this conversations, but it, we should be also aligning. With what's going on with the CONCOM right now.
Yep. We typically try to avoid closing our hearing until after the CONCOM hearing is closed, just because. Until that hearing is closed, there could always be a change, even if it's minor in nature to the plans, that. Would then affect what is on our record, so it would have to be a modification to us at, after that, if we did close earlier. So that's usually why we try to keep the hearing open until the end of CONCOM generally.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone else from the public, either on Zoom or in the meeting, looking to speak.
Nope, don't see anything.
All right, so question for the board, do we, would, would we like to see anything more from the applicant? Applicant besides that modeling, that additional location in the same parcel at this point? Is there anything we think that we haven't heard yet that we want to hear from them? As far as we know right now.
Like I said, I want to hear them propose something that fits with our bylaw. That, that is, uh, not so visually, um. Problematic.
I don't have anything else.
I can't think of any. Outstanding question I have if. There are, you know, certainly many points that I'm concerned about that we've already, you know, discussed and have brought up, but. You know, I don't know what else I can ask for that I, that you haven't already provided at this point, at least for me. Other than the, than we just mentioned. So I think where we're at is you asked to have a continuance.
So what's your next hearing after March seventh?
After March seventh, it's thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
So we can do thirteenth, we can do even.
We can do the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
I think we'd prefer the thirteenth. Yeah, let's do the, the thirteenth, if there's some reason that we can't make it, we'll let you know ahead of time, but. I, I'm assuming we'll be able to get that information back to you before then.
Yeah, as it is, yeah, that's, that's two weeks from now, so.
Right.
Yeah. Right, we would, we would expect to see the information. Several days ahead of time, of course.
Yep.
But, yeah, if you think, if you think that's doable.
I think it should be doable.
And if it turns out it's not, we can deal with it.
Okay, all right, so we'll request to the thirteenth if we could.
All right, I'll have a.
Oh, no, 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 thirteenth and twenty-seven.
Chairman David Maxim here, I have another hearing that evening, if you require my participation, you'll have to either have a late meeting. Uh, so I can attend two meetings in an evening or, um, uh, put it off to the next time.
My inclination is that if you're able to submit, if you're able to, assuming that the applicant. Turns this information in relatively quickly, we can get at least something in writing from you and that might be enough for us for the next meeting.
Yeah, that would be fine.
The applicant is filling out the continuance form, do I have a motion?
I move to, uh, grant the applicant's written request to continue the meeting. And the hearing until March. Which?
Thirteen.
Thirteenth at seven thirty.
Thanks, all right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to grant the applicant's written request to continue the hearing until March thirteenth at seven thirty PM. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Hi.
Mr. Hassenger.
Hi.
Ms. Hassenger.
Hi.
Mr. No, Mrs. Vekatraman is not here and I vote I. To clear that, this most, this public hearing will be brought back up at our next hearing on March thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right. I think I'm going to give a moment for the room to clear out, like a minute or two. All right.
There's nothing more that are votes that require super majority left or need to be attended. Such as the, uh, special permits. And I'm afraid I've got to remove myself from the meeting. At this point, I will review the CMR PC presentation and the rest of it at a later date.
All right.
Only be a problem.
I, I can hear it in your voice, hope you feel better.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so. Next item is the master plan phase two kickoff, I presume this won't be too time consuming, given the weather outside, and we can proceed.
So Justin, just, I'll just do a really quick intro to, um, introduce the team, um, CMR PC. Is being represented this evening by Sarah O'Brien and, um, Elena Ion, who will be, and I'm. Apologies, Elena, if I mispronounced your last name, um, uh, they will be the project leads and Dominique, uh, Jutrem, Jutremble is. Which I also probably mispronounced, I'm so sorry, Dominique, I should know that by now after working with you. Um, Dominique will be serving in a, um, supportive capacity, but, um. But really, the points of contact should be Sarah and Elena. Um, they're going to give a presentation this evening to go over kind of. How we're kicking off phase two, A, um, talking in. Uh, detail about our, um, survey effort, which a draft should be, was in the meeting materials. For your review, um, so that'll be a primary focus of this evening as well as kind of following up about the. Discussion that we had the prior meeting with the steering committee and the options that we have, um, different avenues there. Uh, but I will let them take it away and stop babbling, but I just wanted to give a brief intro, um, in case, um, we needed it, so.
Hi, thanks so much Fiona, um, nice to see all of you tonight, I think you covered it, um, as she said, um, I know you all have met Sarah O'Brien. Um, at one of your previous meetings, Elena is, uh, joining the effort or has already joined the effort for Grafton. So together, Sarah and Elena, I think really constitute two of, um, our most entrenched community engagement specialists at CMR PC. They are co-leading the CMR PC regional planning process for the region-wide plan, so they're really the two best people on our staff at this time. To help shepherd you through the community-driven planning process. Uh, so I know that they have a presentation and I'll turn it over to them, I think it begins with Elena and then Sarah follows up with some, uh, community. Additional community engagement talks.
It's Dave, we may need to give them screen sharing privileges.
I, I believe I enabled it. So you guys should be able to share your screens. Unless Zoom turned it off on me after I turned it on. Should be on.
Thank you Dominique and Fiona, um, hi everyone, um, so as Dominique mentioned, my colleague Sarah O'Brien and I will be. Outlining the plan for. outlining the plan for phase two of the master plan. Um, next slide. We will be going through the scope of work and uh we um as you know, phase one uh in fall of two thousand twenty-two, C M R P C completed phase one. And now we're moving on to facilitate the next steps of the master plan process. But uh phase two consists mainly of three parts, community engagement, strategy or artic- articulation, which contains vision, goals, objectives. And the third is the preliminary chapter development. And then on the next slide, we have a few more detailed deliverables that constitutes the plans, the parts of phase two. Some of these tasks are part of the community engagement uh element. Some of them are part of the visioning and strategy articulation. And most of these elements will play into chapter development and will constitute sources for chapter development. For example, the workshop and uh the data collection that we've done in phase one and the community survey. And uh next, my colleague Sarah will be outlining how these deliverables fit into a timeline.
Thanks, Elena. Uh thank you, everybody. This is a reminder of our timeline uh for not only phase two, but also phase three. So uh our roadmap for how we'll finalize this master plan. Um for phase two, we're looking at our kickoff tonight. We're looking to launch the survey by March fourteenth. That's the date of our in-person Grafton tour with Fiona. Uh so it'd be helpful to have it reviewed by then. Our community engagement campaign will be ongoing throughout this plan. Um but we'll really focus on the spring and summer. Uh stakeholder interviews will begin as soon as possible uh throughout the winter and spring. We'll have our first workshop hopefully in April and our second workshop um further on in the summer. Uh once we have that basis of our stakeholder interviews, survey data uh and workshops, we'll be able to plan uh chapter development starting in late fall. So our deliverable will be in the winter about probably about a year from now, hopefully a little bit less uh with rough chapter outlines um to prepare for this board. For community engagement, we'll be using two general tools for uh communication with the general public. We have a Facebook launch uh which will be Grafton Master Plan, which will also be supplemented by a website, which will have the survey link on it, uh information to join the workshops uh and overall updates about the master planning process for any resident that'd like to be involved. Uh our survey will go from March to June. Uh C M R P C is prepared to provide paper copies to the Public Library and Municipal Center. We'll have an online link link on the website and the Facebook page. We'll have flyers posted around town. Uh and we'll have a press release for media and local print outlets and an email distribution to any known town stakeholders. To supplement the survey, we'll also have ten stakeholder interviews uh and two public workshops. Uh so the first one will be for vision statement crafting and preliminary goals. Uh and then the second one will be when we have more of a base of the plan to go over more of the content. And we're also hoping to attend the Grafton Farmers Market in June uh as an opportunity to gather more public input and a more casual level uh and promote the second workshop. So our survey is twenty-one questions. Uh it was a little bit of a challenge to include all of the topics into one. Uh so you'll see most of the questions are um based on our findings of trends from uh phase one of data analysis. Uh and they're also more focused on lived experience. Um so the, we can go over any questions or concerns with the survey tonight. Um but we hope to keep it open until around March seventh uh for any input from the board or any local stakeholders that like to make edits um if you'd like to review on your own. Uh but there, are there any preliminary concerns with the survey, any suggestions, things to add?
Yeah, I I'm sure I'm gonna have some comments and suggest on the survey. I haven't had enough time to review this and digest it and and uh you know, come up with, you know, any, any thoughts about what more or differently could be done in the survey? You know, my first impression is uh it's pretty good. I think it 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 covers at least a lot of the territory. Um uh I I'm thinking in terms of what would I want to learn from the survey and will, are 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 the questions going to help me? You know, and uh you know, there, there's a line of thinking that I haven't gotten very far into it, so I I I do plan on studying this and thinking about it. You know, I've made a few preliminary notes, but nothing uh yeah, nothing worth sharing at this point, but uh yes, I do, uh I I am particularly interested in uh a survey that gets us information that we can work with and covers, covers all the things that at least I think are important. So I will have some suggestions within the next week or so.
Thank you.
From, from me and kind of, I think it looked pretty good and I wanted to sit with it and give some more thought as well. Um would this be, would our March thirteenth evening meeting be too late to come back and discuss as a board and give you change suggestions or would you need them earlier than that? Just to kind of timeline it for ourselves.
Um it would be helpful for us if we had uh it ready for that fourteenth when we're planning to be in Grafton, so we can add two burns, one stone, paint the paper surveys out and put up flyers. Uh if you did need the thirteenth, uh I think it could be doable, but it it'd be preferable if we could cut it off about a week before, about March seventh.
Okay, yeah, our, our next meeting is at thirteenth, so we wouldn't be able to collaborate as a board on further suggestions if we are doing it earlier, but I I still think that in the end, the we can certainly coordinate with staff and try to get something, you know, our you know, any thoughts we have for stuff, you know, at least in place. But Fiona, you have your hand, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was going to suggest um because I know that we do have uh Thailand, I'm trying to be cognizant of C M R P C's time, so I think if the board could individually follow up with, can ta- take a dive into what was proposed and provide comments to me um directly with their thoughts, and then I will funnel those to C M R P C ideally within the next week. So Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to, so the final cutoff date for comments and revisions is the is March seventh? For launch uh for launch on the fourteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the day, same date as the town tour. Okay, perfect. So if the board is, if that's um a suitable option for the board, that's what I would suggest, just to keep, keep um uh moving forward.
I'll, I will add if any member of the public has comments that they feel on this, since we're not being as a board again on this, I'll certainly hear any tonight if they're on, or if they're watching the recording, you can certainly reach out to staff before March seventh and share your thoughts as well, is what I think would be a appropriate venue on, you know, the questions that we're, we'll be asking with this.
Yeah, and I welcome and encourage members of the public to please reach out to the planning department with comments and suggestions through our website, um or you can call me, whatever, um is the most convenient way to get in touch. I did have, oh, sorry. Apologies, I did, I just had a couple, I just had a couple of comments for the C M R P C team. A lot of, a lot of the questions, well done, by the way, I like this a lot. I think this is uh well structured, hits the hits all the key points. One thing I will say is there's a lot of open response options, and I think from at least a data analysis standpoint, okay, is there way, is there ways, and I can work with you on this, to try and make some of these open responses, multiple choice or ranking, or something where we can we can try and, i- it might make analysis a little bit easier than try, than like a narrative feedback, which we would, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that there would be, if you were doing some sort of like word cloud would would happen or something to that nature, but I think if we could try and at least take some of these and maybe drill down some responses and then we can give us a a final option like other, where somebody can have a short section where they can write in. I just have found in my experience with surveys going through um open responses takes forever and is very, very um stru-, you know, i- i- it would just be a lot, a lot. So I think if we, wherever we can try and drill down and go, you know, provide options for multiple choice, I think Dominique, some of them, of course, you're not gonna be able to do that, right? I mean, do you, you know, I'm just I mean, but but I'm thinking like, you know, number eleven, where what areas or buildings in Grafton have sentimental value to you? I mean, that one obviously should be open response and people should be able to, you know, provide their their feedback without any limitations. But I think, you know, how often do you use the commuter rail rate, like weekly, daily, monthly, you know, something like that. And I'm happy to because this is, you know, I'm happy to provide some options as well for uh multiple choice. But that was, that was my, that was kind of my major suggestion in terms of topics. I think we've covered the gamut and I and I'm, I appreciate, I appreciate that um you've con, you know, tied this back into all of the great work that was on in phase one. So that, that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona.
Seeing what's on the screen reminds me of one comment I'll make on this just tonight, and that's number five. Uh which of the following options for future development would you support in the town center? And unlike many towns, we've got several parts of town that are worth considering uh along with the center. Uh we've got the New England Village in North Grafton, we've got the South Grafton Mill Villages. We, we've got kind of the major business district stretching along uh Worcester Street. So I, I wouldn't limit this to just the town center. I don't know how best to handle it, but you might think about it. Uh there are several distinctly different areas of town to which this set of uh of options would be applicable. And maybe it's like a table, you know, you know, same set of options, but for the the, for the different significant areas of town. Uh something along those lines, you know, thi- think about that, but I mean, that, that's the one thing that sort of li- s- struck me as being it's uh we, we too often get the complaints that in Grafton, we always focus on the center and ignore the rest of town, and I don't wanna do that here.
I I saw that the uh as soon as I saw town center, I thought common. That's, that's the center of town. Um and that, that is another business area. Um but yeah, you, you listed them up. Uh Worcester Street through the middle the, the heavily developed area and the others. That also reminds me of a question from, that was asked uh during previous plan, which is where do you think the three parts of town begin and end? There were no two people with the same idea where the law was going north, south and so center.
Yeah, the, the design of a Grafton as it has evolved, it's not sort of your typical, you know, center, central business district was surrounded by mostly residential areas or an industrial area off to one side or anything. It's, it's just the configuration of this town as it evolved is sometimes a bit difficult to come to grips with in terms of thinking about what the town is and how the town should grow and develop. It's one of the challenges of doing a master plan for Grafton.
That might be an area to ask a question about if you could figure out how to ask it. Um you know, do, do you wanna try to keep isolated centers? Or somehow unify everything? I don't know.
Yeah, we have to kind of work with what we have.
Yeah, but you, you can develop towards different dir- directions, you know, fo- fo- folks who are dedicated to uh North Grafton or South Grafton. Some of them are gonna wanna have their community. Um and not have it just become all Grafton uh with no even harder, there, there won't be any dividing.
Fiona?
Thank you. We can uh rewrite number five. Very helpful.
One other thing I wanna get an understanding because I'm just noticing uh the, the diversity of housing in Grafton over time has significantly changed. Um and I would just be curious if we could include a demo uh probably in the demographic question section about tenure renters versus owners? Just to get a sense of how many renters are actually taking this survey.
Yes, we can tweak number seventeen instead of current resident to add that designation.
Yeah, for town moderator, something like that, yeah.
Current resident home, current resident renter, whatever.
Yeah.
So one thought I have around trying to get more participants on the survey is a possible like confirmation with the town moderator that we could have this as a flyer for town meeting. The actual survey to fill out at town meeting, which is in May. Cause that aligns with when we're looking to get responses.
If, if I may, Sarah, will that be too late in the timeline for you guys? Or should we?
Um we're expecting March through June for the survey to be open, so that's perfect.
Yeah, that would work.
We would just need to confirm that the town moderator is okay with that, which I don't anticipate her not being, but it's still
We've, we've done, we've handed out surveys in the past at town meetings, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Correct. Alright. I think that seems to cover every comment and question we have so far tonight.
Was there anything else that you guys wanted to discuss about the master plan?
Uh yes, Elena will go over um the plan development.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will move very quickly through these. Um there, the, there's a second deliverable after the community engagement, which is a strategy articulation. And by now, we will have the benefit of having completed the community engagement part and we'll, we'll have data collection from phase one, so we will draw on these sources to articulate a vision and goals and action items um by working with the town and the planning department. And then the fir- third deliverable after this will be the plan development. Uh and that will be on the next slide. And I will go quickly through these chapter um titles just to outline as examples the type of questions we are thinking of answer, answering, and it, the type of questions are based on the data that we collected so far. Um but I should also note that this phase includes mostly the narrative development and not the graphics. Um it includes some visualizations, but not the layout and the graphics that will be left for phase three. So part of our deliverables will be a rough draft of these chapters and we'll present the findings at uh at the meeting in spring two thousand twenty-four. Um so uh the chapters are based on the Massachusetts General Law. Uh there, there are seven chapters outlined and we are adding the um quality of life chapters, so a total of eight chapters. The first one is land use. And uh it will obviously deal with public and private land uses and the interrelationship between these two types of land uses. And some of the questions we'll be asking are, um what are some of the underutilized areas? What are changes, uses, layouts, um types of open spaces that residents would like to see in the whole of Grafton? Or in focused areas such as North Grafton? And in general, we're trying to find out what are the desired characteristics of various areas in Grafton? For the housing chapters, we um we've examined some of the data we've collected. And uh the, the primary premise here is that there's a, a, a population increase, and it's a pretty steep population increase um uh by two thousand twenty. Um and we are trying to explore how Grafton will accommodate this growth. Um we're also trying to take into account that Gra- Grafton has been designated as an M B T A community, and we will explore that side um of, of housing. And um generally, we'll try to find out whether the current housing stock meets the residents' needs. And on the next slide, so for the economic development chapter, um we are, once again, drawing on data we've already collected, but um s- uh some of the findings from uh the data collection has been that uh the largest employers are educational services, healthcare, social assistance. So some of the, the questions we're anticipating coming up are how can the town support these employers and these industries? But also recognizing the fact that small businesses constitute a great part of of uh Grafton's economic base, so we'll be looking at how the town can support small businesses. Um and um the next chapter, natural and cultural resources. This chapter will provide an inventory of the town's This chapter will provide an inventory of the town's cultural and historic resources. But we're anticipating that the main questions that will come up of of our community engagement phase is. Uh this tension between trying to protect these resources and protect the town's characteristics and small town feel. But also uh figure out this balance between growth and preservation, so. That will be the main premise of this chapter, again recognizing that it will change um possibly after community engagement. On the next slide, we have open space and recreation. Um we have a a similar problem here of protecting open space. Uh but also allowing for growth. And um the the way we'll frame this chapter or the way we anticipate that will frame questions coming out of this chapter are. How can we protect these resources, but also how can we leverage them? So we'll apply an economic development lens. To natural resources to look at. Maybe Grafton can become a destination for outdoors recreation. Maybe Grafton can leverage its natural amenities, um but again, at the same time trying to protect them. Yes, go ahead Fiona.
Yeah, Elena, just wanted to make a point here that yes, you're right on the money in terms of where there might be some friction, especially with the housing chapter. I. foresee that, so I just wanted to. To highlight that and maybe when we're when we're conducting our outreach and engagement, we try and get people with differing. You know, differing thought processes in the same room, like the open space advocates, housing folks like. Natural and cultural resources advocates and stakeholders, just something to think about and that that's kind of more of me crafting the stake. Stakeholder interview list, um which I am getting to you, but just something to think about as you're going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that point noted. Next chapter is services and facilities. Um again, the same question that came up in housing. Uh the population is growing and we're we're trying to um. Strategize on how the town can accommodate this growth, both in terms of expanding services. So new classrooms, uh municipal facilities, housing development, but also on on maintaining the quality of service delivery, so. Um the this will be the balance that we're looking for here, um as we're trying to strategize um accommodating this population. Then on the next slide. We have transportation. Um we've we've collected a good amount of data. And we will analyze some of this data to um. Understand how uh first of all, we're we're recognizing that um. Uh large segment of the population is using the commuter rail. And uh part of the focus here will be how can the town enable and encourage. This uh transit oriented development on the one hand. And then explore what type of multimodal amenities do Grafton residents want. And lastly, quality of life. Um this this chapter will. Uh we anticipate that some of the questions that come up are related to uh. General quality of life, healthcare, well-being, but will also have to do with poverty. Um um and how low-income residents can access healthcare services, childcare. Um housing and um um how can and and yet another question that comes out of this. Is how can we increase public participation? So. Based on the data and community engagement, this is one of the questions that we're going to try to gauge. And then on the next slide, um I we we have a breakdown of how. Uh these chapters will be uh developed in terms of timeline, so the chapters will span roughly. Uh from August to February of two thousand twenty four. And uh this will culminate with a presentation of findings um in February of two thousand twenty four. And the delivery of a rough draft of uh the master plan chapters. And I will hand it over to my colleague Sarah.
Uh so Fiona mentioned that in previous meetings, uh the board has been um. Throwing around a steering committee or a working group model, so Elena and I will briefly outline what these could look like. Uh CMRPC is more typically using a steering committee model than a working group. Um steering committees meet monthly as a deliberative body. Um they're appointed by the planning board. Uh and they are usually here for approval of workshop agendas, vision statement, goals and draft chapters. Uh so the pros of a steering committee would, it would definitely take some pressure off of these planning board meetings uh and the board and the planner. Um it would also bring more local knowledge to the plan. Some unknowns is we're not sure how long it would take to create a full board and if. Uh there would be any timeline changes based on the approval process of each of the draft chapters.
So the second model we're considering is a working group model. Some of the the this would be um. Uh a working group accountable to the planning board. The members would not have voting rights. And we are anticipating or thinking of this as having a membership drawn from community stakeholders that include. Residents, business representatives, local institutions, developers and so on. Um and one of the advantages of this um configuration would be. That it will allow us to move forward without holdups and avoiding issues with quorum and assembling the committee. And having to appoint members, posting meetings, et cetera, and um. Um and it it will allow us to keep with the original timeline.
Get around the open meeting law? By doing that?
Um so our consensus uh. Having spoken with Trish and other uh team leaders is technically a working group model would. Would not violate open meeting law. It would not necessarily be in keeping with. Highest to best practices, but it would be consistent and it could be the. It could be much more viable and well received publicly if um you would just ensure that. Really robust community engagement opportunity, making sure that, you know, anybody who's interested at all can attend the working group. And that we really, really do a great job and really deeping, reaching deep into the community um and promoting the opportunity to participate. The real, the primary drawback of a working group model is just perceived lack of transparency. It doesn't need to be untransparent.
So just.
Uh our our last plan, we did it more on that. People who wanted to participate good. Cause it wasn't voting.
Two questions. Does the working group model being okay prevent three or more planning board members from attending any given meeting?
Uh yes, I don't think you could, I I don't think you could have a quorum.
Are we discussing? I don't know. Yeah, you might, we might have to ask that question. Cause uh the scope of what we're doing.
The other question, just to be sure, I don't think there's any issue with it, but. During working group model does not preclude us from posting that we're having a working group meeting, does not preclude preclude us from. Recording it or even posting minutes if we wanted to.
Not at all, so whether or not a board has that legal, that statutory um. That statutory authority. It's always, you know, consider best practices just to pretend as though it does. Just for the full sake of transparency, so you can keep the minutes, you can post the meetings, just even if it's not necessary, and it'll go a long way.
Either model has a problem with uh three or more planning board members. Or three or more members from other uh well, a quorum uh or uh from any. Of the uh.
If we do the steering committee model, wouldn't that? As long as we're posting and articulating that it's a meeting with a. With the focus of the. Of this. Wouldn't that still be okay, even if it was three or more?
If you're satisfying the rules for an open meeting, the open meeting law. I think you can do that. E- either way, it with either model, it's the same question for either model, so we we don't have to. Worry about that too much in picking which model we like. Do we want a a body that votes and, you know, decides stuff? Or do we want them to? Work productively and and bring things to us to to the planning board to uh finally settle on. It strikes me that that that. Seemed right before.
Fiona, go ahead. I saw Eve's hand, but it went down, so.
Yeah, so um another suggestion. That I had, I had been talking to a few folks in town about how to best deal with this because again, as as I mentioned before, we're already. We've already done a complete phase without a master plan steering committee, so we are a little bit late. But we still don't want to preclude the opportunity for more public input and um. And one suggestion that was floated was having a planning board delegate work with department heads and the department heads would be the. Working group that would meet and review deliverables from CMRPC for accuracy. Then the those meetings would be open to the public. The planning board, uh the planning department rather, would kind of own and manage the group. The department heads and the delegates would work together to coordinate the deliverables. CMRPC would provide the deliverable. And then we could have some, you know, and a an opportunity like that, which is still open for the public, but where you're not. Having to worry about. Open meeting law, not, you know, you're still being very transparent and you're also not delaying the project anymore. Um so really it was either, you know, you can have a a a group that meets regularly, that the planning board will kind of man. A planning department rather will manage, or you can have a delegate from the planning board if somebody is interested in that option. That was something that um had been mentioned to me as well, so. Something else to consider. I think that the formal steering committee model is. Is, you know, obviously the. Most uh in terms of going, checking all your. Crossing all your Ts and dotting all your Is, but it's going to delay us significantly. I mean, I think I would be more in favor of something that is. Either option number two or one of the two options that I I suggested from that from talking to other town staff.
I'd I'd like a working group model, maybe with. Whatever push we can give. Get some. Interested people, you know, or maybe a selectmen, maybe, you know. With various uh people from in the government and from other significant areas, maybe. Probably somebody from the schools um and um with with community.
Yeah, I will, you know, just one point from my experience on the open space and recreation plan. Um we put together a committee, but subject to the open meeting law was. Representatives and certain other groups and and town staff supporting it. And after a while. It got to a point where it was very difficult for us to complete the work because we could never get a quorum for a meeting. And to say nothing of all the staff changes and and you know, non-staff changes. Uh that effort lasted for. Too many years. Started in twenty fourteen, fell by the wayside, restarted in twenty seventeen. Five years later, four, five years later, we finally got the plan done, but. By the end of that time, I think I was the only one of the original members who was still on that committee. Uh and uh it it for a variety of reasons and and I I don't know that that entire experience would necessarily. Pop up if we did a uh. Steering committee model, uh working group model, less formal. That's more like how we developed the hazard mitigation plan, which was basically. The members of that committee, it was not an official committee, it was not subject to the open meeting law. I was the only board and committee member on that, the rest of it was all staff. Uh and that worked, that 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 worked pretty well. Uh I just want to make, I would, you know, however exactly we do it, I'd want to make sure that we got adequate participation. From the people who needed to be involved in this.
So, yeah, I I lean more toward the working group model as well, you know, my. Reason to kind of just say for myself is that I, even though I don't think we should have the formal requirements for a quorum and. That, you know, trying to make sure we can get that going. I, to the extent feasible and possible, it'd be really beneficial to me to have. A of it, the meetings available via Zoom, meetings, you know, posted in advance that people can know, you know, via posting methods that. We're having a meeting, we can have the its agenda, look, you know, worded in some way that says it's not. You know, technically subject to open meeting law, but we're still doing it this way or whatever, and you know, that'd be a benefit to me if we can.
Yeah, I think a bo- a a a a body, a committee of some kind that. Basically reports i- is is a sort of a, an advisor committee to a a town staff person. Is generally not subject to the open meeting law. So there are ways, I think there are ways that could be that can be structured, so that those, you know, it's open to public participation. Uh but yet not quite so formal.
It just.
If I may, yeah, I I thi- I think that the open, the working group model, I. Don't really think, I mean, CMRPC, let me know if I'm off the mark here, but. I don't think that you're going to be able to. You you're gonna have to adhere to like formal posting requirements, et cetera, through open meeting law with this. Model, even if it is a more in informal than a standard steering committee, you're still going to have to. Do due diligence in that regard and post and ex ex us. But what Dave was saying, his option there for, well, it was kind of, yeah, I guess to Dave's. Dave's comment and then Justin's follow-up comment about. Having the the option of the planning department. Hosting the opportunity to provide comment on a periodic basis with. Uh that's that's completely open to the public and kind of CMRPC provides us the deliverables and. We kind of set something up in that in that that way, cause at least it's the it's the staff, as Dave said. Handling it. CMRPC, let me know, let me know if you think that's not a good idea, but that was. Kind of just basically, basically what Dave just said.
I'd like to see it be open like this, uh Zoom, public participation. So it it ought to be a thing that has a chair and and all of that. I don't, i- if if the meetings are posted. I would think that the. Planning board could have more than two members there, cause they're. You know, it's a it's a posted meeting with what we're gonna be talking about.
I see that you.
If 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 um. If you have a fairly tight group of desert, you know, people who are really there on the committee. Uh and then reach out as much as possible to a public participation. In addition to those people uh would be really good.
So very briefly before Eve goes, just to ask it. When do we need to have the decision on working group steering committee or whatever other option decided by? Is that? Is that tonight or is that like two weeks from now? Just to kind of steer us along.
I feel like it really should be tonight. We 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 really need to get this nailed down. Um because it's gonna involve a lot of coordination on the part of staff to start getting the word out, get people who are gonna be committed and. Dedicated to this and so CMRPC can kind of keep moving on what they need to do. That that would be my preference. I mean, CMRPC might have a different, uh might have a different response, but.
Okay, I move working group with and and we'll have to quickly refine. Embellish to figure out exactly what it's like, you know, exactly what that will be. Okay? Someone want to second that? Or do we need it?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion at least.
Okay. Eve, I know I stopped you from talking before the motion, but go ahead.
Sorry, I just had two quick things. I think if more than three, more than a quorum of, or a quorum of the planning board were to attend, you'd have to actually post it as a planning board meeting. Um, uh, uh, but that's doable. It's just, uh, the other thing is, I think before you even discuss this, you might wanna, uh, poll the, the board as to whether they wanna extend the meeting past 10. It's getting close.
I, I think we can turn over this vote before 10 and then we can do that extension.
Yep.
CMR PC, do you have any comments or questions before I take this vote from Mr. Hassender?
Sorry, was that the CMR PC?
Yes, I, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Do you have any comments or questions before I take the vote from the Mr. Hassender's vote?
I, you know, I think that a working group would better allow us to meet, allow you to meet your timeline. I think it'd be more nimble. I, I expect that what Eve, Ms. Tapper just said about the quorum is probably accurate. You, I wonder if there are some options to get around that by maybe posting it as some sort of public workshop. I'm not sure, but we could certainly contact the state's attorney general and find out. There's an open meeting law hotline. We'll have that answer to you in no time.
I, 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 I can point out that, uh, on a number of, of occasions over the years, we've had sort of workshop style meetings where we invite the public in. And it's, it's, it's not a formal board meeting. I think, uh, the, the ones I'm thinking of, we've held, held these meetings in various, various different locations in town to, you know, to discuss various different issues informally, but, you know, not, not organized as a board. And, uh, and, and yes, we've posted, we've posted notices, advertised meetings, recorded them, uh, for future viewing. So all, you know, all that should be doable.
Okay.
Okay, I move the question.
All right. No further discussion. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassender?
Aye.
Ms. Hassender's absent, Mr. Venkatesharaman is absent, and I vote aye. So we have our direction.
I move that we, uh, extend the meeting beyond 10 P M.
Second.
I have a motion to extend the meeting past 10 P M. And you discussed it on the motion, hearing none, Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassender?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Declare the motion carried. Unanimity of those present. All right. Is there anything more we need to discuss or tackle regarding the master plan tonight?
Dominic, Elena and Sarah, I will be in touch with you tomorrow about steps for this on conversation this evening, so. And kind of, I guess, uh, we should talk more internally, what we need to do, or I need to do rather, to get that steering committee, uh, oh, working group rather, sorry, um, into a, uh, uh, get, get that kind of off and running. So just, just know that I'll be in touch with that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
And just as a reminder to the board, I'll parse in a notice out myself, but that we're, just a reminder of the deadline for March 7th, to submit survey comments or concerns through, through staff. All right. That brings us to just about 10 P M. And our next item, thank you for waiting for Holden Farms 95 Restboro Road, West, Wesson Road, wow, it's getting late.
Westboro, Wesson, same thing, right?
Yep. For the zoning bylaw amendment proposal and I know, Ms. Holden, you can come on up to any microphone or anyone else that is talking on this. All right. So I believe you have all seen our last meeting where we briefly discussed this, or at least heard about some of our concerns, but do you wanna start?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're pretty much kind of looking where you guys stood as far as, um, like you said, we saw you talk and, you know, there was, uh, comments about like maybe different acreage, um, the noise, you know, and all those sorts of things. So we were just kind of seeing, we presented something and we're wondering, you know, what you guys' thoughts were.
So I think the, from a memory of the discussion, if one thing that was, you know, of partial concern was just the allowing it outright by right, rather than having it be, you know, brought before, you know, the plan would to, you know, approve a special permit on the, on the use. And that was, you know, just because in the end that for you or any other parcel that it would apply to, it, it gives less, you know, it gives a town less opportunity to actually, you know, shape the actual, the outcome that in, in appropriate manner, but, I see Bob's hand, go ahead.
Yeah, um, yeah, that, I, I, I push that point. I think if we do that, I think this can go to town meeting, uh, without, without an objection from the planning board. I, I can't imagine the planning board, uh, being positive with what we have here, uh, being by right. The, the special permit has a number of advantages. Um, there are all the, yeah, how do you measure sound? Um, how will this work out? Uh, it, it gives a, a way to solve those problems in a practical way in the future. I don't know how we can write a zoning bylaw that addresses the sound measurement, um. You might want it to say, uh, this, that's a factor, the special permit, uh, has to address, um, uh, appropriate sound levels, cause at some point, if you actually wanna have measured sound levels, my experience in that field suggests that, uh, you need a professional. Who knows what he's doing in that kind of sound measurement. You don't, you don't just take your iPhone and run the B B meter. Uh, have to know what you're doing. Uh, this kind of measurement, like, like some comments came through. Um, at the, at the boundary of the property, it didn't sound this and that, different kinds of sounds or whatever. It's all, it's all way beyond what you can put in that little use clause. Uh, and it, and then no way we're gonna get a whole section in the bylaw about it at this point. But if, if you craft the, craft it with a special permit, uh, then I think all the other bases can be, uh, can be covered and supported. Um, there's been an issue about, um, the spot zoning, but that's not our problem. We can't, the spot zoning comes up. If somebody goes to court, uh, from what I've been able to read, and then it's, there are no clear guidance on it. Uh, every case is considered separately. Um, if we, if we made this twenty acres or more or something like that, uh, I think that might help. I think there are a lot of five acre properties in A. And, uh, a lot of, I'm thinking of how many people might figure out what we're talking about here and say, oh no, my neighbor over there with five acres, he plants a few things and then he opens a beer garden. Um, and we don't want that concern to be, uh, in town meeting. Um, so, so we might, might ask for a larger number of acres to narrow down. Although, uh, I wouldn't mind if it was, um, within, uh, well, I'm not sure. What's the acreage of the flea market? Um, they have a beer garden part, I guess based on, um, um, non, uh, grandfathering, um, and this might, they're in agricultural. So if the acreage included them, they'd have a, a better chance to, uh, have, have an option, uh, if they need it, to get out from under these, uh, non-conformant, but. Anyway, I, I, I really need the special permit, uh, and I think the rest of it will work. Uh, we'll just go there. You might not actually mention seven acres, you'd be, um, you might, uh, have some, some phrase, uh, a phraseology about to be, you know, it has to be found satisfactory, uh, by the planning board, a special permit.
I'll say, Bob, I just looked up the acreage for the parcel for the flea market and according to G I S, that is, I'm looking at the right parcel. Double check if I did the right thing.
Not a big one.
Five point eight acres.
What?
Five point eight acres.
Five point eight?
Acres.
All right. Let it, let it be five acres. Special permit still, um, still, still gives a chance to have conditions specific to, uh, the, um, particular situation or even, uh, the, uh.
You wanna go ahead?
Does that just, address to me, Justin?
Sorry, go ahead.
Sure. So I, I, uh, this is Fiona Kaufman, Town Planner. Um, I just wanted to weigh in because I underscore, um, what Mr. Hassender is saying, um, we really need to have a special permit inside plan review for this because there's no way that the board has any discretion over what happens. We don't. Um, having this by right in the way that it's written currently, it's just a bit, it's just too vague. Um, you know, the accessory, the proposal for an accessory use, we don't, it, it's not really, like the accessory use as it's written, doesn't really have a connection back to the farm, which is supposed to be a sort of like nexus between that accessory use and the principal use. If you were having the beer garden per se with some local crops that you were making on the site and then selling that beer with, I'm not, I'm gonna butcher this, but barley or hop, whatever you're making there, that is kind of how you could get through the accessory use. But so that's the first, so that's two things right there. So I think it's, we, we, you need, we'll, you'll definitely need special permits, I plan review. A, B, you're gonna need to change the language so there's a understanding of how this is going to be an accessory that supplements what's going on currently. Um, the, the decibel and the volume issue is, yeah, it, that, that, that is, you know, we, we floated the idea at the last meeting. I know that Rachel did respond in an email, which is posted in the meeting materials about the inability to, to move the use that would generate the noise. Can, can we talk about that a little bit more about maybe some of the constraints that you're, you're facing? And because if you were, cause that, I think that is going to make a huge difference with the noise. Cause you could be at ambient noise level and it seems like it's still going to generate, it, it, if you're close, the closer the property line you are, you're, it's gonna generate the noise and people are probably still going to complain, is my understanding, at least. So if there was any like value, like any sort of way that there, that could be possible, we could move it to a less noisier portion of the site, I think that that would really help you guys out and help, help with the issues with, with the butters worried about noise as well.
If, if they had, I've forgotten exactly, I think the land slopes off as you go back. Um, if you're down, down slope, you, um, block the sound. You know, the sound only goes that way. And up, up over, it doesn't so much come straight across the street. Um, so that is an advantage, but I'm, I'm willing to, um, willing to let it go to town meeting, um, more or less as, as is. I try, except that I, I don't put seven, don't put a number of B B, um, put a, uh, a s- fairly strong required binding by the planning board.
Yeah, it, it occurs to me, couple of things, basically focused on understanding this in, in the zoning law as an accessory use. Specifically an access, an accessory use to an established agricultural operation. Now, we may recall that agri- agriculture on anything over five acres is allowed by right in any zone. And if this particular proposal were framed as ex- an accessory use to an agriculture, an existing agricultural operation, it doesn't need to, the land does not need to be rezoned to make that work. And I think not rezoning that land is probably going to be helpful in getting it through town meeting. Second, and I, I briefly mentioned this in the previous meeting, i- it also needs to be clearly understood as an accessory use, which means it should be a relatively small portion of the total land that's in agricultural use. Uh, what exactly that proportion is, I haven't really thought about, you know, whether it's like five percent of the acreage, something along the five or 10% of the acreage. The total acreage that's in agricultural use, maybe five or 10% of it can be dedicated to this accessory. As we can worry about the exact numbers if we wanna follow up on this idea a bit. And then the other aspect of that would be, uh, the agricultural use to which this is an accessory should be some minimum number of acres, you know. So like, you know, if it's six acres in agricultural use, and you, you probably, it doesn't make much sense to have this as an accessory or something like this.
Right.
Uh, so, you know, in, in principle, yeah, I, you know, you, you may recall, I, I had previously raised the idea, and I think maybe even the previous meeting a little bit, of a more generic sort of agr- agritourism concept, which some people's definition of agritourism would include entertainment and food and so on, others not. But we don't, we don't necessarily need, need to broaden it out. It's just, you know, here's, here's a specific set of accessory uses that you're, 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 you're looking to get allowed. You know, and if, I, you know, I, I agree by special permit gives us the discretion to evaluate it and, you know, in, in the, to the level of detail needed, but an accessory specifically to an otherwise legal agricultural operation of the agricultural operation being some minimum size and the accessory being some percentage of the total area devoted to agriculture. Think we parameterize it that way, it probably, probably works out pretty well, meets your needs. Theoretically meets the needs of some other agricultural operation. They might want to do something similar. You know, we're not focusing this totally on you, although, you know, obviously your operation is what we're looking at right now. But, you know, you know, we're not, we're sort of, sort of defining this as, as, as more along the lines of general principles that work for you and who knows conceivably would work for others. I don't really care. But defining it, again, I won't repeat myself again. I think I've sort of laid out the parameters that I'm, that I, that I, I would feel comfortable with.
Are, are you saying put something like that in the bylaw? Or would you be looking at relying on the planning board to, uh, make, make?
I, I, right, I would, I would put some of those parameters into the bylaw. You know, just, just to make it clear, to, to make it clear what the bylaw is contemplating as an allowable accessory use here and what isn't. So, you know, there has to be some, some thresholds, some parameters, uh, detail, it's harder, i- is, based on our previous discussion this evening, you know, doing a lot in the bylaw in terms of noise could be problematic. But, uh, you know, some of the basic parameters of, you know, you know, what could be considered to be allowed, uh, some of that probably needs to be written into the bylaw.
Yeah, the, the problem is that we don't have much more time before this has to be submitted. And I don't see, I don't see developing that. I don't see developing that. And they need to have this, this season. At least they sure want to.
I mean, there is some. Wording on accessory use in with agware, if you don't go over, don't mark me on the exact number, but like. As long as it doesn't exceed. Like forty-nine percent, or it's like an eighty-twenty within season, and I mean, I can get that all together, um. You know, and that would start to set a good boundary of, okay, this is what, you know, we have to do in order to, um, you know. Have it happen, and like, say, off of the beer garden, it can't exceed what the actual primary farm is doing overall. And sales per year, you know, um, and then. You know, I mean, we are a hundred percent in agricultural operation in many different ways, and we already have, you know. Other accessory uses like our agricultural compost facility, um. Yeah, the food truck that, you know, we, we use our vegetables on, um, so I mean. It's all about as long as you maintain the agricultural aspect of the business, which we, you know, seriously are. Relying off of that income there, you know, this is more of a, a way to bring the public to our farm. To show them, hey, this is what we have to offer, you know, they come from Friday to Sunday and they're like, oh, we didn't even know there was a vegetable stand. We've driven by all the time, so now what that's doing is making our farm stand more profitable, so that's. Right, more viable, and that's where I just think we'll never have that issue of beer and. You know, all of our other accessory things, you know, exceeding what the farm stand does initially. Just because with the influx of people, it's just gonna keep growing our business and not only ours, other local businesses in town, so.
I think that's the, that's the overall goal of what we're trying to do with, you know, this, you know, by law, we, we don't want. To be worded in such a way that. You know, somebody that has five acres that, you know, plants like, you know, ten zucchini, zucchini plants or whatever. Sell them and then they're also building a, you know, beer garden that ends up being ninety percent of their, you know, stuff and, you know, so.
There are rules about, uh. What that agricultural use is required to be, but forty-nine percent is part of that. And, uh, that's not gonna get past me. Um, it's gotta be a. Relatively small part of a larger. Uh, operation, I. I don't, I don't, no, we can engineer this for about a year. Um, maybe until the fall we can get it, or we can rely on, uh, special permit. With maybe guidance, uh, to the, or, or requirements to the board to consider. Uh, whatever meant to be considered.
Yeah, I think we do want to keep this as simple as possible, but also. You guys would like to maximize the probability that this will actually pass town meeting. So we have to, we, we have to be a bit sensitive to, uh, making sure that this doesn't look like, you know, some sort of vast overreach. And it, it would, we don't want it to look like it, you know, opens the door to a whole bunch of things that people are gonna object to. So, yeah, I'd like, yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd like to keep this as simple as possible.
Right, and work together on it.
Simple as possible, but not too simple.
The thing is, they're thinking about their farm. And we are too, but. We, the planning board have to think about all the other people who come along, the minute something passes. A bunch of people start finding out how to maximize whatever they can get out of it. Other people, but we have to think about what's gonna happen with this in the future, zoning stays around a long time. So, my right.
I see both Fiona and Eve with hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, a comment, yeah, I mean, the, tha- that's, that's the thing here, it's like, it's going to be. What Justin was saying earlier, it's, it's setting a precedent if somebody has a. Growing something small on their property. That's, you know, this acreage that's proposed here, and now all of a sudden they can, they can have like a beer garden, like, you know, it's. We have to, we really have to kind of iron this out, like, the minimum acreage, I think. And the special permit process will be our friends here, because, because you, you guys are such a sizable parcel. You can really increase your, your minimum acreage. For this use, and it, it, it makes sense, like, the way it's written with five parcels, I mean, there's a lot of. Parcels and graft in that. Like, like five is a very low threshold, but if you're talking something higher, then you're still able to accomplish what you want to, and it's also not going to be. Ongoing problem with future neighbors going forward, because we don't have like a million and one people coming forward to try and. Have a live band in beer garden on their five acre parcel.
Yeah, can I, can I suggest here that, uh? What we, we can, we can bring, you know, we can, you know, let's go away and think about it, but. If we not think about it for a long time, we, we have, let's say, let's say next, next meeting. Next planning board meeting, if we can nail down, you know, I think, it sounds like we're all in agreement that special permit is good. You know, and it, and it can be special permitted in any district, because. This is by definition, it's an accessory to an agricultural use, which is, you know, anywhere an agriculture use is permitted. Uh, in fact, maybe, you know. That's not quite enough for me. Uh, you know, the, the five acres, I, I don't know what, you know, the accessory use, it's probably, uh. Throw out a number twenty acres.
Two, two things, access, um. The agricultural use, you might wanna cite, you're talking, or maybe it, the, the state. Law, you know, there's a law or regulation on that. Which talks about the forty-nine percent, wha- whatever, all those things. And the other thing is be careful about the acreage. Uh, if you don't, i- if you set it too high. You will be. Zeroing in on pretty much one parcel.
That, that's, that's why I think twenty acres is probably a reasonable threshold, because there are quite a few properties that are. Probably twenty acres or more.
Yeah, and my, my head was like fifteen to twenty, so that was kind of my head.
No, and I wa- I wanted to honestly protect all the farmers and worry about the whole community as one, but what really community of farmers is there other than us in town? I, I'm not trying to say it like that, but, like, forget about it all and worry about ourselves, I guess, it's.
That's how it is today, you know.
I was trying to be nice and be like, oh, what if someone has a real diversified, uh, five acre with this at the other thing and. But it's like, no, let's go fifteen, twenty, that's.
Who, who knows, that could change.
Right, oh, yeah.
I, I, I wonder if, uh, Fiona has heard enough to be able to work a little bit with you. So that you have something for it next time.
To what we have, and maybe taking out the, um. Like, uh, changing the zoning.
I don't see that you need to rezone it. Because by state law, agriculture is allowed by right in any zone.
And what's nice is no one can come in afterwards and do something else there if they're not a farm.
So leave, yeah, leave the zoning alone, you know, just, you know, make this an accessory use. Uh, it, it's largely gonna be a matter of sort of rewriting a little bit of the language in this accessory use.
To work with Fiona, because she understands what we're talking about, about the language. What's in the use table, so.
Eve, Eve's been patiently waiting with her hand up, too.
Thanks, I'm sorry, so I had a couple of questions, which I, I, I hope might. Or comments that maybe will clear this up, but the first is, is, is the planning board willing to sponsor or interested in being the sponsor of it? If in fact they, there are changes that are made that are, uh, to the planning board's liking, or is this gonna still be? Even, even if they work with the planner, uh, is it something that would be, uh, sponsored as a citizen's petition? Uh, I guess you can answer that question first, that's one thing I was thinking.
I'll, I'll say based on the discussion tonight, it sounds like we're, the planning board that's here is all. In favor of, of being able to sponsor this if this, you know, if these changes are made to our liking.
Okay, cuz that makes a difference if it's sponsored by the planning board versus a citizen's petition.
If we sponsor, I think also has a better, a better chance of passing at town meeting than if it's just a citizen's petition.
Right, and we can explain how we would go about reviewing a project like this. So, based on, you know, compared to the proposal we've got now, just to reiterate, so we're hopefully clear. This, you know, we're defining this as an accessory use. Allowable by special permit in any zone in connection with an agricultural, in existing, you know, legal agricultural use. And. All right, I lost my train of thought.
On twenty, on twenty acres or more.
Twenty acres or more, the other parameter that we might, we, I don't know if we need to consider this, and, and this, this could be considered as part of the. Just in, in the special permit review, but, you know, how much of that total agricultural acreage can be devoted to this? You know, and, you know.
To like one specific accessory use.
Right, so, so, so like this accessory use, and that would encompass everything that falls into that accessory use category. But should it be like ten percent of the total agricultural acreage or fifteen percent? Is that something that we can leave to the discussion of the board in reviewing the permit?
That was gonna be my next question, actually, if you don't mind, was, well, uh, um, in some towns, and you guys know Grafton much better than me, but in some towns I've worked in. Um, you can have, the parameters are in the zoning bylaw and then, uh, um, you know, the discussion, these, these individual discussions are left up to the. Special permit granting authority, in this case would be the planning board, and, uh, sometimes towns will be fine, they trust the planning board, they have no problem. And some towns, they want the whole thing kind of written out, and even if it's in regulations, they'll wanna see the regulations or the. Kinds of issues that the special permit granting authority will be using before they'll pass it, because. Um, so I don't know if Grafton is like that, but if you don't have the param, the, if you don't have the set parameters that you're thinking of. Uh, judging any applica- special permit application, is that gonna, uh, prohibit a lot of town meeting? People from voting for, cuz they're not really sure what it's gonna be, and as I said, I, I don't know what the flavor in, uh, Grafton is. Um, but then the last question I had was, uh, it doesn't even sound like if it passes town meeting that it's gonna. E- especially if there's a special permit, that it won't be able to get started this summer in, in this particular case. Um, am I, and I don't know, because the process will take. A while, I assume you could probably start it before the A G approves, but you still have to do the application process in. The twenty days and if your town meetings and until May, I don't know if that's gonna. Uh, speed it along, and I, those are my comments.
They, they've been getting along last year. On one day licenses. Um, exactly how. But they have that, and, uh, there's, there aren't enough one day licenses of the way I hear it. To cover the whole year, the whole season, but there might be enough to cover what you're talking about, you know, the, the, getting started. I'm not sure whether they act, well. But, what happens if? They start. Then the A G comes back and says, no, then they have it up. But that, but that's, that's okay. That, that, that would be the best you could do.
Right, but the problem with the one year license, one day licenses, I, I thought that the Board of Selectmen was not, was thinking of not allowing that anymore, that's how we. Got to the point where we're looking for a more permanent solution to that, but also. If there are issues with sound and the like, those can be addressed in conditions in a special permit, but not if the special permit hasn't been issued yet. So, uh, tho- you know, the kinds of things that you, the planning board would want to regulate or make it easier to enforce. If there was an issue would be in the conditions of a special permit. And so, the, I mean, I think that would be a, a, a good way to do it. Um, and then you're protecting the surrounding neighbors who have clearly had an issue with it in the past. The problem is, is there enough time to get it? I'm not sure that there's enough time for the planning board to look at all those issues and. Issue a special permit. For something with all these conditions and time for it to work for this summer.
So, yeah, my, my current thinking and, you know, in the first place is that I think. There have been things that playing what is probably for town meeting that just don't pass a town meeting, you know, that's happened, and. But that said, I feel relatively confident that with what we discussed, if we bring it to town meeting. Without having every single criteria, we're looking to, you know, review a special permit on, you know, in writing for town meeting. Where are, are prepared to talk about it, I think, you know, my impression is that this might, you know, not have any issue passing. You know, of course, you know, best laid plans and all, but the other, you know, piece here for me is that. I, you know, it's hard to say how fast we would be able to get through a special permit process once it's actually submitted, but I will. I will also say that. My impression from what the select board has talked about in the past is that, yes, they're not willing to, you know, continue this without. A formal plan forward, but if this did go to town meeting, it did pass a town meeting, they'd be more likely to say. Okay, we can give you a little bit of a, you know, space to, you know, start your season, you have the planning board, you know, which will have to go, you have to go through and then. Possibly getting a, you know, determination from us at that point and having a better result.
Isn't the main point? What's, what else is there that's better? Than doing this, we have to pick, we, we have to do what is the, the best thing to do, even if it has problems. And has un- unknowns, all we can do is the best we can do. So that's what, that's, you know, where I'm coming from. Let's, let's move on.
So, Mr. Chair, the only thing that I can comment on this is when I wrote, um, I think three, four, two, four. That's, um, to let a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Get permitted without going in front of the zoning board of appeals if that addition, uh, met all the bulk requirements. We, I, we wrote it, it passed, it went to A G, and the A G kicked it back to us and said, we need, um. Better yardstick. Because we didn't give it the proper parameters, that's the only thing that I'm afraid of right here, is when you talk about accessory and you don't. You put that in the bylaw, then it might get kicked back, I don't know if it's gonna get kicked back, but it might get kicked back. Cuz you're actually saying it's an accessory too, but you're not really defining that accessory, so I think you have, you know. Two weeks for, for this jo- these gentlemen to figure out. Wha- what, or how that can work for them on what the accessory, uh, wording should be. Had great comments here, but I really think you should, you know, try to put it in for the town meeting, because I think that will take one more piece off the puzzle. And that's all I wanted to say.
To clarify from, for me to s- say is that I, I think my understanding was that. Uh, the very least, the accessory two wording would be clarified for this, you know, article for town meeting. And, you know, the pieces I wasn't as, you know. You know, worried as much about is the wording on, like, how do we measure, you know, how do we evaluate what we consider appropriate for sound, how do we evaluate? You know, those.
The sound is, the sound is easy, if we don't have the bylaw, then you go by the state regulation. Which they're not violating right now, and it's, 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 it's ten DBs over ambient sound. And we know what your ambient sound is, because I got a couple complaints and I looked into it, and I have a report and you have not gone over that. Now, I don't know when you had that, that rock and roll band there, that you got all those big complaints, but I've been to three or four of them. And you were only, um. You were, you were well under the parameters. So I, I think that you should, instead of saying the seventy, you should just talk about adhering to the EPA regulations. Whatever that M G L is, I don't have that off the top of my head.
That, that's inadequate, no.
Well, Mr. Mr. Hassenger, um, we did get from council, if we don't have a sound regulation. Then that's what we have to go by, because state always trumps, um, zoning.
Um, no.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that, that, that regulation is, well.
Come on, I'll pick a mic.
All right, my name's Jen Richlich, I'm that neighbor at eighty-eight Weston Street. I'm here to address some of the issues in Ms. Holden's letter, um, about her fear that a structure, uh, will still not be enough. I interpret that to mean nothing. I interpret that to mean nothing will be good enough for us neighbors. Let me remind these boys, inform the board if you don't know, and the residents that are following the proceedings. We presented the Holdens with the compromise on May seve, uh, May fifteenth in twenty twenty-two. We met with Tyler and Trevor in the, in our front yard, my husband and, uh, Bill Richlich Senior was there. Our compromise would have allowed them to play music two days a week, or two days during the weekend, with the possibility of a third day so long as the mu, music was acoustic, and we could not be, and it couldn't be heard by us budding neighbors. We wanted one day during our summer to be music-free. Pretty, pretty good compromise, in my opinion, that was all we were asking for. Our compromise was quickly dismissed. We were asked what we were gonna give up, and then we were told to sell our house if we didn't like it. All that information is in a select board meeting packet on May thirty-first on twenty twenty-two. I'm gonna skip the comment about the music, because it's obviously subjective to everybody else's opinion, because it's loud. There were some decibel readings at our house that were ninety. In my garden, eighty. Sixty-five to seventy to eighty, they had amplified music and it was loud. The select board required the sunflower shanty to build the structure to mitigate the music. The structure ended up being a pop-up tent with a sound dampening blanket hanging from it. During most events, the speaker was placed outside the tent. So yeah, I have concerns that their more permanent, yet mobile structure will not mitigate the noise to the acceptable levels of the state. Um, we built our house across from a farm, tractor noises, children playing on the playground are all noises that are to be expected. I didn't build across the street from a bar with amplified music. Had the music stayed acoustic like it was pitched to us at the beginning, I'm sure we wouldn't be here right now. A couple clicks of the volume button down, turning it down, may have been enough, but it was never considered. On that note, I just want the, ask the board to think about their neighbors opening up a bar with amplified music, disregarding your compromise, and having carte blanche to have live music private events until late into the night in your front yard. I can't, I can promise you that Neil Diamond, playing in our bedroom at ten forty-five from a surprise birthday party is not something you would wanna live with either. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for yours. I, my one piece I wanna just briefly mention that I thought about, what, when I listened to, what you said is that if it is on a special permit, one thing that the planning board does have the privilege to say is, you know, hours of operation on the, on the use, and that's something that we can, you know, articulate in the actual, you know, what do we, we do that says, you know, if we wanted to, I don't, you know, we could say, we could do it past seven PM, you know, I don't think we're gonna do that.
Yeah, I mean, if we can come to a compromise.
That's not what I would, that's not the time I would post, but it's just, yeah.
Last year, we ended at seven thirty, because that's.
With music.
With music.
And the beer stayed open until, uh, last call was like eight forty-five, we were never open. But whatever, I'm not sitting here arguing about complaints.
That, that, that's not a.
Right, I think, I think in terms of what we could look at for zoning here, we've covered, you know, we, we, I think we've kinda covered the idea of keeping, keeping this as simple as possible.
Right.
Uh, and relying on the special permit process to, you know, you know, give the board the necessary discretion. Back to size, I think we sort of, sounds like we sort of tend to believe said that, yeah, allowing this on anything over twenty acres is probably a, a good parameter. Now, the other aspect of it is, yeah, how much of that acreage can be devoted to this accessory use, and I'll just throw out for the purpose of the discussion, limiting it to no more than twenty percent of the acreage.
Agree.
And that's, 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 that's probably way more than you actually use, but.
Right.
Yeah, a, a, as a number that. As, as a number that clearly says this is an accessory use, that's kinda what I was looking for.
Accessory use to the agricultural operation.
Right.
Which would fall in, would it fall into like something like agritourism?
No, so what that, what that would fall under is, eh, like, any amount of land we farm, just like with the, the compost facility we run. It can't be on, or it has to be on like no more than ten percent of your overall farmed acreage, so.
Right.
Where we have the main farm, the farm down the road, we rent off of the Nolans and then Perranians, that is all our farmable acreage that we are currently farming. So, I mean, is that?
Yeah, and I, I was thinking more in terms of on that one parcel, you know, the forty-nine acres that you have right there in Weston. And, you know, if, you know, if, if no more than ten percent of that is used for this accessory use, or twenty percent, if it's twenty percent, that says, well, you've, you've got up to ten acres of that that you can use for this.
Right.
Which is probably more than enough.
That's way more.
Listen, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take land away from.
So I, so I'm just looking for a number that says, this is clearly an accessory to the agriculture.
Yes.
It, this is, uh, the, the current thing is occupying an acre, maybe?
Uh, seventy-five by ninety-six foot length, where the actual beer garden is held. Other areas have like the playground that you pick, the, uh, corn maze, which are all, you know, totally aside from the actual beer garden itself.
But what you do have to think about now is, let's just say that this all goes through. Now you're gonna need a building permit, and the building permit is for a change of use, and that's gonna kick in your parking. Your parking now, you're gonna, and I know that's not part of it, but I wanted to bring this up. Your parking is gonna have to be required for your handicap accessibility.
Yep.
You need to have an accessible route going to wherever.
Egress.
Everybody goes. Well, you have to get somebody, either with a walker or with a wheelchair, to be able to participate in what, what, in all the activities you have, in, you know, that probably including your, your petting area too. You know, so I just want, and that's part of the acreage that, that they're talking about. It's not just the little spot where the beer garden is, or where the people are hanging out and listening to live music. It's everything encasing that use, from them parking, walking, sitting, observing.
Well, that's like, I agree with that, but I guess like our, our parking lot is used for our primary agricultural operation also being the farm stand, you know, in order to.
You have, you have one handicap spot.
We have three on the location.
Right, but you, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, waste their time on.
No, no, not at all.
Something we can talk about later, but, you know, if you have a hundred people at your place.
Yep.
You need to have the parking for a hundred. No, no, you do, they drive up there and they park wherever. But all of that up there, whatever, needs to be on an accessible route, needs to be labeled for your handicap parking, so that van can park there with the hash mark, so they can get out of their vehicle.
Right.
That's just something you have to think about. This goes through, and now you, and now you wanna open. These are the new regulations that you're gonna have to adhere to, and, you know, I, I said enough, but I wanted you to hear it tonight, that that's what you have to do when this goes through, or if this goes through.
But if we're not changing zoning.
You're changing use, you're, you're doing.
So then when.
You're doing assembly.
Not if, not if it's as an accessory use though, right?
Oh, no, you're doing assembly. Like this, this is a business use, but if this room was for a hundred people.
Where I was, where an exceed a hundred, a natural closed-in room?
No, I'm just saying, I'm using this building as an example. This building is a business use group, but if this was twice the size, we could get a hundred people in here, this would be an asse, an assembly use. It's not an assembly, because we're under forty-nine.
Right.
But you're gonna, you're gonna be, right, you're gonna be in your area over a hundred or over fifty, so that little area that you have that they're talking about is gonna turn into a, um, an accessory, excuse me, uh, place of assembly.
Right, but that, that considers like structures, uh.
It considers everything.
Even outdoors.
Your football field, your fo, our football field here is an outdoor assembly. So we have to, we have to.
An outdoor assembly.
Yeah, you're an outdoor assembly.
What, right, you're, right, I thought you were talking.
No, 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 outdoor assembly, which has to kick in certain parts of the building. That's all I wanted to say, I'm sorry for taking your time.
I see three hands. Eve, Fiona, and Bob, Bob, do you wanna go first, since?
Yeah, I just wanna ask Bob, um, back to the sound levels. The town doesn't have a, um, a noise bylaw. But what starts the town from adopting a law that speaks to sound in some particular circumstance?
Nothing, if we wanted to adopt a.
That's exactly what we have here, you raised that, or people have raised that based on whatever the comment was back, that we don't have a law, so we have to go to the state. No, the town can adopt this law and it can say, uh, whatever it needs to say about some in that circumstance.
But the state, even if we had a bylaw, and if we had the bylaw that you were proposing, the state would trump that, because your bylaw just says seventy DBs. And, um, I know and you know, that your ambient level is, is fifty-something. So if you say seventy, you just went twenty DBs over the ambient, and the state says, hey, you can't do that, that's way too loud.
Right, and that's why I want to put in that one of the planning board considerations is to judge what the sound level did to.
I'm gonna leave it.
Given circumstance, if they were back down over the hill, maybe it's a different thing. Just keep it simple. Get this done.
Alright. Eve and Fiona, I'll let you virtually thumb wrestle.
I just had one comment to follow up on Mr. Berger's comments. We, we would exercise that discretion with the parking with our, with, through a special permit site plan review application. Correct, I mean, that, that's what I am proposing.
Oh, I agree, Fiona, I, I agree with that, and we would.
Okay.
We would, we would look at, um, again, four point two, because we have outdoor recreation on that. I was trying to get to the accessibility, that, that's what I was really diving down to, the accessible route, the handicap parking, the hash mark. Those things.
Okay. That's all I had.
Eve?
Yeah, I, I think, I agree with Mr. Hassenger that there, there could, could and should be a condition of the special permit that addresses the sound limit. Um, and I, I think it can be the state, or we can make it more restrictive. I can't imagine that we could make, let them be louder than the state, and I don't know that we would want to. Um, and along those lines, I think one of the things that we talked about the last meeting was whether or not asking them to move it further away, move whatever it, the beer garden further away from, uh, the property lines would, uh, would just naturally, uh, make it not as loud, because it'd be farther away. I understand that, um, the Holdens in their letter have addressed why that's not feasible, but I think the board might wanna think about, um, or I'm one, wondering if the board has any, um, has any, if that, if that resonates at all with the board in making that a requirement, um, or potentially a guideline. Because once the, once a s, a special permit application is submitted, it's hard to kind of redesign the special permit. That might be something that you would wanna put in the, the bylaw, just to protect the, the neighbors from the sound purely by the distance. Uh, but I don't know whether the board members who are here tonight have a thought on that one way or the other.
I don't think I followed what you wanted to do.
I will move the beer garden for multiple reasons. Accessibility being one, infrastructure, we've already done there, I mean, it's been like three years we've been working, pulling electrical in, doing this, doing that, it's just not feasible at this point. I mean, like you said, it's over two hundred feet elevation from the bottom to the top of our farm. You really can't do stuff on, you know, our farmland, never mind erosion control, that whole farm is configured around a specific use, and up top is the only accessible, feasible spot for us to go.
Yep, I'll, I'll say at least for my own thought process right now, I can't imagine wanting to put any provisions in the bylaw that relate to the location with the mindset of our reasoning of sound. It just doesn't make sense to me, there's, location is one but many ways that can mitigate sound, and, you know, I'm not, I don't see the location being worth putting in the bylaw, that, that we can always discuss at a special permit, you know, point and figure out there is something that, you know, we're not comfortable with, let's say it's, you know, five feet from the, you know, property line, which I know it's not, but if it's five feet from the property line, we're probably not gonna be okay with that, but, you know, that's something that I think we don't need to have too specific in the bylaw. That's my, my own personal thought.
Yeah, I think, you know, what's, what's in, what's of significance is the sound level at the property line and beyond. How that is, if, if there's a limit to that, how that is achieved is, that's basically internal to the property, is how we go about, or how you go about, uh, limiting the sound to whatever, whatever level is deemed appropriate at the property boundary. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna get into trying to regulate the interior in that respect. There are enough other regulations you'll have to deal with, and some of which Bob's been talking about, but, yeah. We, we probably wanna try to bring this discussion to a close here.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, sort of just to reiterate what I think we've kind of agreed on is, number one, a special permit across the board, number two, it's allowable in any zone that's, it's an accessory use to an existing otherwise legal agricultural use. Uh, number three, it's like, you know, on an agro, where the, the, the land on the parcel in question, uh, it must be at least twenty acres of agricultural use, and this particular accessory use, no more than, I would pick a number, but I think I threw out twenty percent, no more than twenty percent or some smaller percentage of the total agricultural operation. And do we need to put anything more than that into a bylaw?
Ten percent.
Bob says ten percent. But what, what, we, we can tweak the numbers a little bit, but, uh, in, in principle, if that's all we need to do in the bylaw, then we can work the details and come back with sort of a final, a, a final proposal at our next meeting, and maybe we'll say that's good enough, and let's go, let's go put it on the warrant.
And then if we work with you, you guys work with us and sponsor it, and.
Yeah, I think, right, if, if it comes from the board, it's probably got a better chance of, of getting approved at town meeting. You know, if, if, if the board here says, yeah, we're comfortable with this, we think it, we, we know, we know what we can do with it, and we, and, and, uh, we're convinced that we can regulate this in a way that also, uh, gives adequate consideration to the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Yep. And.
If, if you look at history, you'll find that citizens zoning artic, citizens petition zoning articles have not done real well. Planning board articles have done rather better.
Yep, and I just wanna just say to be explicit that us sponsoring this article for town meeting is not any sort of guarantee that, you know, when it comes to a special permit, that there would be things that you might not wanna budge on that we wouldn't be okay with, you know, that could always come about. I don't think, at least for my, me personally, I don't think I'm at that stage where I don't see any way forward, but that's.
I mean, it'd be better for us to work together, I mean, I think so.
So you guys are just saying you want us to get in touch with Fiona, make those changes.
Yep.
Resubmit for the next town meeting, I mean, not for the next planning board meeting, sorry. Um, which would be, was it the?
March thirteenth.
Two weeks, March thirteenth.
Alright, so, just so then we have it, an idea what needs to be done.
And then we can, you know, discuss and, you know, likely we'd sponsor that, you know, the final wording of this word, warrant article change, and it'd be at town meeting for us.
And that'd be good. Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for bearing with each other.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, we're not quite done yet, are we, guys?
No.
Almost.
Oh, we're pretty close, we must be.
Alright, we will do that then.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, we truly appreciate it.
Look forward to trying to get this nailed down, and.
Thank you.
And hopefully in a way that you can move forward and everybody can be reasonably happy.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you, you too. So, we have to, the remainder of the proposed zoning bylaw change four dot two to talk about, do we, what's the board and staff's feeling on this? Do we wanna continue to tackle this tonight at the time, or do we wanna, or is this worth pushing till our next meeting?
Push.
No, I think we need to talk about, just for a couple. No, I think we need to talk about just for a couple of minutes, because there's just a couple of things that Fiona needs to bring out. I think she's gonna talk to you for fifteen minutes, but it'll prepare us for the next meeting.
Okay.
If Fiona doesn't mind.
Nope, nope, that's okay, yeah, I uh, I think that the best, we can just, Dave, if you wanna pull up the proposed changes from four point two. And just scroll to the end of the document.
Alright, let's see here.
That would help. And I, in my memo to the board, I um outlined an analysis to justify how I got there, which I'm not going to rehash this evening, cause it's far too late to do that. Um, but this is what I, based on what I've seen in other communities, I took a sample of about at least ten communities. Examine their requirements, and it's pretty standard across the board that people are basing their um parking on square footage instead of employee counts. So I, this is what I proposed, I didn't wanna put a number, because I think that's something that the board should be deciding, based on their knowledge of. Uses in town, um, as well as their like, you know, their their expertise. Um, but this, but it typically looks like it, you know, communities that I've seen, it looks like transportation utility uses are typically a range. Between five hundred and thousand square feet of gross floor area. Where industrial uses, I think that uh my my professional opinion is that it should stay the same as what it was originally, which is five hundred square feet. Um, and then warehouse uses are typically their own line item. You ca- you do see a lot more leniency with warehouse uses, because it's not. Because just of the nature of the use, but I have, but again, looking at my analysis of other communities, you do see typically within the range of five hundred to a thousand. Square feet as well, so I don't want, that that is what I am. You know, feel free to, we can, we can talk about it more, but uh, at the next meeting, but this, I think what the board really should consider. Is if they like this layout and also a number to assign for the parking, for transportation utility uses and for warehouse uses. And if this makes sense in the context of Grafton, based on the development that we've seen, um, that would be my recommendation. So it wasn't significantly different, but I think that it's pretty clear that the employee count, because it's so unpredictable, isn't a good metric to use. To base uh, to base parking off of, because you know, that can fluctuate, and at least square footage is a different, is a definitive number.
I, I I I don't know how to pick the number, you know, I don't know as much as anybody. I know less than anybody else, but um, parking spaces relate to people, you know, you need parking spaces because you have people. Um, you're, you're moving a step away when you go to square feet, and you're guessing how many people. Might be in a square foot, uh, or or a certain number of square feet, you're getting further away from the people. Uh, and I don't, you know, maybe that's a good thing to do, but uh, it's even harder to decide what a correct number is. One, I think that, I I think I'm looking warehouse use, one space for five hundred to a thousand squ- square feet. Uh, transportation, uh, same thing, um. Those numbers may be. Maximum. You know, I I just, I, I don't know. I've always been under the bylaws table.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I. I know about the same amount on the specific numbers as Bob, I will say, at least on my. You know, barely informed mindset, Northbridge is probably close in, you know, overall scale of business and, you know. At each individual business, as Grafton, you could tell me if I'm completely wrong on this, but, you know, seeing that they have like one per one thousand square feet for like wholesale industrial. And that might sound like it might be the right range, and I'm.
We we've been living with one space for five hundred square feet. That's what we've been living with since nineteen ninety-four. Um, I can tell you that there is a warehouse in uh Northborough, I don't, I'm not gonna tell you the name. But I saw their regulation, and they're one for every fifteen hundred square feet, and when I have to go in there to inspect, I can't find a parking space. So I think fifteen hundred is too big.
Yeah.
Maybe five hundred's too small, maybe we can go seven fifty? You know, because your warehouses, not many people in all shelving, and it's all automated now. So I I think a good uh medium would be for warehouse, uh, one parking space for every seven hundred and fifty square feet. I think you could live with that. I think industrial, if you wanted to bring and 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 just keep that number, because now the machines are big. Cause that's, that's Wyman Gordon's again.
Yes.
And I think um the five hundred or the seven fifty could be a good number, and transportation, um, and utility use. That is thinking it's a bus terminal, that's the T station. Um, utility use, that I have no idea what the utility use is, maybe it's the, it's the power s- um, transfer station on on Waterville Street.
Yeah.
I think you're, I think you could keep the seven fifty going and get rid of the one point three. I think if we could um say to Fiona today, you know what, let's give her a a direction of seven hundred and fifty. Per square gross uh floor area, and then we could come back next, on your next planning board meeting, and that might put this one to rest.
Yeah, that that sounds plausible to me, I think, I mean, the the park. Parking is really related to employees, and and these uses in particular, it's parking just for employees.
That's right.
A few visitors, but so, you know, so small, it's not a retail business where you have to have parking for customers, the parking is all about the employees. Trouble is, how do you relate employ, how do you measure employ, employees, the employee counts are gonna fluctuate up and down depending on how the business changes. You know, and, you know, something like, you've you've, you've been around long enough to remember Wyman Gordon having, having a lot higher level of employees than it does now.
Absolutely.
And so, the business may remain essentially the same, I mean, it may, you know, it may change a little bit inside, and the number of employees goes up and goes down. So it, when you're building a facility, you really can't accurately measure the number of employees that are gonna be there over time. So, as much as I prefer an employee based count, cause that really gives you the best, the best measure of what you need for parking, it's problematic. And so, uh, going, yeah, going by square feet, you kinda have to get, sort of guess at the, the average or typical number of employees per square foot. And so the, that's a long way of saying, yeah, yeah, I I tend to agree, I think, you know, separating them out this way, going with seven hundred fair square feet of floor area. For transportation, utility and warehouse, it's probably reasonable.
Okay, alright.
And I'd, yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd go with that and, you know, reflect on that and give it some more thought, but I would, yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd be inclined to go with that.
Okay.
I'd, I'd be interested to see our existing uses in town that we know about. And uh, how they fit this. You know what I mean? Cause we can look in, you know, if you say uh per per thousand square feet, then we go and we find that the parking lot's ninety percent empty. That'll tell us something, and if we go and see the parking lot is really full, that'll tell us something. Um, yeah, and all the towns, I think, probably did the same thing we're doing, kinda throwing darts, writing them down, and now we're going and looking at what they wrote down. What I wanna know is how did it work out? What have they, what is the experience been? Um, and I don't know that it's very easy to chat that. By the way, um, um, transportation, does that cover the train station and how?
Yes, that, yep, that was the intention, was that it would include the train station.
But there's, there's um, depa- uh, are we measuring indoor square feet? Cause there aren't hardly any out there, and yet they have two or three hundred spaces.
Hmm.
This is, this is the bare minimum, this is the bare minimum, and and basically, eh, like I said with one graft in common. If you, if you don't provide enough uh parking, then you're not gonna have the customers. Obviously, the T needed to um analyze how many passengers they're gonna have, and how many cars they're gonna need to park there. And that's why the buildings, or the parking lots built the way it is, and is there enough parking there? No, there's never enough parking there.
I I will say, one point three employees maximum shift, the parking allotment is a lot higher than that.
From for the T station?
Well, it's square feet, I'm I'm look, I'm looking at the square feet now.
Of course.
Um, instead of employees, uh, I don't know that there are any employees out there, somebody comes around once in a while for money. Um, or or for maintenance, maybe.
Does the T station have anything that you can honestly call floor area?
No, they really don't.
But, by the way, what they did was, yeah, I think they analyzed how much flat land they could find, and they filled it up with parking. Yeah, they're pretty much up against the terrain there.
Okay, yeah, so the T station.
I thi- I think they built like two hundred, then they put another hundred on the back end.
What I'm gonna do for next meeting is I'm gonna give you an analysis on the old Tupperware factory. Because that's a building that is being used right now, I know the square footage, and I I know what they have for parking.
That works.
So I'll, I'll, Fiona and I will bring that back to you on, in two weeks, just for a comparison, because Mr. H wanted that.
Yep, so I'll, I'll say with a little objection from the board, that the thought process right now is Fiona and Mr. Berger to. To just thinking if they, seven fifty doesn't sound right, make an adjustment, and we can bring it back here, cause none of us seem to have that strong of opinion on the exact numbers. But either way, the overall intent is seven fifty across all three, and we'll bring it back at the next meeting along with that analysis.
Okay, and and Fiona, do you not wanna talk about uh four point, the other four point two, or you wanna?
We can.
Alright, it's all.
Well, well, that the four point two, um, the other section that you're talking about, the parking for the VMU, Bob?
Yeah, I am.
Yep, so that's twelve point seven point six. That one, I didn't, I only addressed in the memo, um, because at the time, it it really needed warranted more discussion with the MBTA community folks, but. Let me, um, but yes, we we could, yeah, we can, we can touch on that if I can. Yep, that's fine. Industrial, I'm just making one quick note as a follow up from. Okay.
Is it snowing?
Which one are we looking at?
So this one, um, so the twelve point seven point six is the off-street parking schedule that I did not put it forward for this part of the meeting materials this time. Because it's, it's just warrant, warranted more discussion from the last time because of compliance with MBTA communities. Um, Bob and I have continued, Mr. Berger and I rather have continued to talk about this and think that we've come to. A compromise based on what Bob, you know, Bob's desire to see in- increased parking to make. To make the, make the parking more feasible in village mixed use, but also that works with our MBTA communities, cause that was my biggest pushback, was like, okay, well, we're considering the village mixed use districts. For compliance, and as they are structured currently, we are compliant, so I do, I was reticent to make any changes. To the zones, because, because of that, um, but Bob and I met this morning and discussed. Sights uh decreasing, well, well, okay, so we just, we proposed, this isn't in a, and so I'm not sure if this is something that we, we're going to need to talk about more. Um, at the next meeting, because I haven't put anything forward as part of the meeting materials, but we did propose getting rid of the table as we discussed last time, the twelve point seven point six. Using the multifamily parking count, and then creating, and then having language in the zoning bylaw to refer. Folks to a separate section for the MBTA overlay or the new's, new zoning district, which enforces the village mixed use. Parking requirements as they're stated currently.
Let me just, so, let me just add into that real fast.
Mm-hmm.
Keep the multifamily, two bedroom and three bedroom, two point two five. Two bedroom and three bedroom, two point two five, don't bring it up to three point two five, cause it's all gonna round itself off in the end. And then add that other line for the studio apartment as one point two five. Because if we kept that studio in the three bedroom, that was um creating havoc with Fiona for the MBTA um zoning. So we're just adding, we're keeping the multifamily at two point two five, adding another line for the studio apartment as one point two five. Just so people can start thinking about the visitor.
Yep, you know, that, that sort of, I I, a few days ago, I ran across, and I don't remember why, but I ran across the parking schedule for the town of Clinton. Where their parking schedule for multifamily has like three tiers, for studio, for one bedroom, and for two, or maybe it's. Studio and one, two, and three or more, I forget again, but it's, it's like two or three tiers based on the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
And in addition, they say for every five units, one visitor parking space.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's an interesting idea to look at, I mean, you you kinda suggested a couple, a couple tiers, depending on number of bedrooms, number of spaces, which is. Kind of conceptually similar to what the town of Clinton does, uh, but then they've added to it by, by saying for every five units, provide one visitor parking. And so that, that kind of, you know, it it, to me, to me, that kinda makes sense. And as it applies to village mixed use, where one of our objectives is try to, try to reduce. The total number of parking spaces, in VMU, if you can share parking, your, your basic requirements can be reduced.
We, we have that now.
And that's kind of where, that's kind of partly, partly where we're at.
Well, do you want us to go back and rethink it, or not?
I. My leaning is to. Present what you have next, for our next meeting, we, we have kind of now, but at the same time, like think about, is this where. Like you and Stat, you know, Fiona, want to think that it should go, that way that we can have a more in-depth conversation.
I think the next meeting's the last meeting we're gonna have, and, cause I, and I really want this to be on the next wa- on the warrant.
Okay, yeah, cause what I was gonna get to is that if we can't come to a decision for next meeting, we may be looking at fall, but if, if your strength is.
Problem within, you know, I I've been, we've been talking about this for years, we've got these projects that are starting to come through. That will comply to our bylaw right now, that is gonna be the same issue at two seventy-four.
Yeah.
That it just, it just doesn't work, and that's why we've been having this conversation. So, you know, everybody now has village mixed use, and they all wanna take advantage of it, and I, that's great, let them. But we've got to figure this problem out, if we don't figure this problem out, we're gonna have more problems with the fire lane, two seventy-four again.
Yeah.
So, Fiona and I, we, 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 and and Eve, we all had the conversation. What we pro, what we're gonna propose does work, but your idea, taking Clinton and trying to see what they do. Because they probably have in Clinton, a two bedroom, you need, you need two, then that's it, no, no fraction. No fraction at all, but every five, but that's almost the same as what I'm doing with the two point two five, every four, you need one.
Yep, that might, that might work.
Okay, okay.
You know, it's just, right, a- and again, the problem is that. Where you don't have adjacent parking, where you don't, you don't have parking, you can share, you need to make sure that there's enough. Where you don't have adjacent parking, where you don't, you don't have parking, you can share, you need to make sure that there's enough on that premises.
That's right, and in our existing by law right now, we have shared parking. So even if if they don't meet the two point two five, you know, on their standalone. Well, they can jump into the shared parking regulation and then it all works out. These these issues are the ones where they don't have shared park. Okay.
So that's, yeah, and that's, that's the distinction and that's, that I think is what we perhaps didn't fully take into account when we created V M U. We kind of assumed that the developments would include some shared parking.
Again.
They probably do.
I'm gonna still blame this on Steve Bishop. I think we should call him.
Anyway.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
Hopefully we can get that nailed down in in a way that works.
Just, just one point to make that. The parking for the V M U as it stands currently would still apply to the districts that we're examining. With C M R P C. For V M U, we're looking at two districts in the V M U and eight Pine Street right now as. Our proposed districts for M B T A compliance, as they are currently, we are compliant. So I really, really want to underscore that we need to keep what we have for the. Overlay in place. I I understand what Mister Burger is saying and. But the from the perspective of state statewide compliance, which we have to do. Where we're at now, if if we can just have a section. In where in four point two saying. You're in a uh you're you're proposing a development in M B, the M B T A overlay, whatever we decide to call it. You must adhere to. These more stringent parking requirements and that those requirements supersede the underlying zoning. So that's, that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
And just for, you know, I know you can look it up, but just say it for the meeting, Clinton's. Regards I looked up while we were talking, single family dwelling, two spaces per unit.
That's us.
Two family dwelling, two spaces per unit.
That's still us.
Multi-family dwelling, one space per studio dwelling, one point two spaces per one bedroom dwelling. One point five spaces per two bedroom dwelling, two spaces for three plus dwelling units. And then plus one visitor space per every five dwelling units. Any fractional parking requires, especially so, you know, zero point five or greater, whatever.
Is that one point five again? But the one point five, every five units, you're getting another one, so it might. You know, when Clinton work it's well, but they have a lot of off-street parking in Clinton too.
Yes, they do.
So there there, you can't compare Clinton to Grafton because everybody parks on that public street.
Right.
Yeah, we, you know, we we do need to be thinking about what works for us.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and uh and yes, we need to be thinking about what's going to work for the M B T A zoning. Should we choose to pursue this option that Fiona was just talking about where, you know, we we take existing zoning districts. With maybe minor tweaks and that becomes our M B T O zoning that maybe works. It's not our only option for the M B T zoning. There's other other options that we can look at, but to keep that option open is to keep in mind. Whatever we do for parking, if we're going to keep out, keep the option open for using. Village mixed use as part of our M B T zoning, we wanna make sure that whatever we do in V M U doesn't. Make M B T zoning not work for us.
And and Fiona and I have already talked about that, we, you know, extensively, they can always park under, but if they park under. Then we have to give them um help on the height of the building because you just raised the building a little bit. If Fiona's got her hand up.
But if you're keeping the parking in the overlay as it is, then we don't even need to worry about the height. If we choose to go with this configuration, which I, you know, as Dave mentioned, it's not our only option, but it's definitely. A very viable one and I'm working with C M R P C to reexamine what we can do in residential multifamily districts. And run the compliance module with those as well. I mean, cuz I understand that. We know, we need, we do need to look at alternatives to try and be fair and meet in the middle with this, but um. That, you know, just if if we, you know, the height allowance would be something if you were. Increasing the parking.
Anyway, I think we've talked.
Have we beaten this one to death for tonight?
Oh, yes.
I think. Given the comments of the board, I I think the path forward just to restate and people can correct me if they disagree is. We have a solution that staff thinks will work. Staff will think about the other. Option that Dave just mentioned and come back to us with what staff believes is the best of the two options. And we can move forward to our next meeting and I I think I'm comfortable with either either one.
Excellent. My weather report says it's starting to snow.
Thank you, planning board.
Thank you.
I'm glad I'm not happy to drive home.
Thank you, Zoom.
So.
What do we have left?
We have any additional staff report that wasn't in the Brigadi Village memo. We have reports of planning board representatives on town committees and C M R P C. Let me have a join. Anything relating to staff report you wanna go over?
No, it's it's too, it's quite late. I will spare you all. It's nothing significant. I, all I did, I I. The the biggest, one of the biggest things is that I'm continuing to work with the housing consultant um on the housing production plan and getting her. The data that she needs, um so that's moving along quite well, um. Working toward updating the Institute Woods study um presenting. To the uh C P C, I will not be um, Justin, I know that you and I have talked about as the. Point person for the C P C, but um. That that is moving along and should be fine um. And lastly, um, we're just continuing to utilize available L P A hours to work on our mill overlay. Um, and I am going to be submitting an expression of interest for Wi-Fi hotspots. Through the community one-stop portal, particularly focusing on Perry Hill Park cuz that seems to be. The most desirable and feasible option for the town at this time, but other than that, I have nothing major at this moment.
Reports and planning will representatives on town committees and C M R P C. Only thing I have to mention is our C P C meeting from last week was canceled due to quorum. That's gonna be held this Thursday and as Fiona just mentioned, she will not be there to present the Institute Woods Trail. But I believe Ken Hoburger is going to. Be a champion for that regarding his relationship with the land trust, but beyond that, anything else? Dave or Bob wanna talk about?
I have nothing.
Alright. That brings us to adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This is non-debatable. If you two both vote no, I'm gonna be upset.
I'll vote I on that one.
Mister Hesenger.
I.
And I vote I. Goodness, carried unanimously. Have a good night, everyone.